Oh.
Yeah.
You said you'd see Quan.
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
Same from Norwich.
You used that?
Yeah, we were a little bit fair and then it was a little vague.
It turned out to be terrible. From the beginning, it was all in the words of the speaker. Some people had a little voice. Not done actually.
Good, good, thank you.
I'll be speaking.
Yeah, good.
And do you have another tactic that you need? We use these things on a sermon. Different than.
Yeah.
I mean, I think one is one to. Why would that be your message? Without.
Well, how do you know?
Take a couple hours.
Yeah.
Do your job. I should have you. What were your teachers? That's why they're.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah.
We have a whole house and a packed agenda, so I am going to get us moving so that we can stay on time. Welcome, Matt. All right, so this is the Connecticut State Board of Education meeting of September 6th, 2023. Call for 9:30 a.m. at 450 Columbus Boulevard, 819-936. And I will call the meeting to order. And Karen, the voice Walton, your chair, and pleased to be back with you. I hope everybody's having a good start to a new academic school year. And it is great to be here and conduct our business together. Let's begin by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. Starting a new year, gives us the opportunity to welcome our two newest board members, our student members, joining us today. When we relax together, we get to wish well and farewell to our outgoing members. And today we get to welcome Connor Coits and Yasmeen Galal. I'm just going to ask that they both come forward to administer their oath of office.
I, Connor Cowan, do solemnly swear or affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States as long as I continue to be citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully discharge towards the law the best of my abilities and the duties of the office as a student member of the Connecticut State Board of Education, so help me God.
Yeah.
I, Christine Gadda, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge towards the law the best of my abilities as a student member of the Connecticut State Board of Education, so.
Congratulations.
Do you want to welcome the board members? Connor, can you tell us a bit about yourself?
Sure. So I'm a rising senior at a field level at school. Super excited to be here. And I mean, the point of advocacy for me include sustainability, we're looking at thinking about that within Connecticut schools as well as diversity equity and inclusion. So excited to bring those perspectives hopefully here.
Wonderful, great to have you. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I have my dad in the back.
Wonderful. Thanks for being here, Ben. And you're.
Hi, my name is Christine. I'm a rising senior at a local high school. And I'm really interested in the intersection between technology and policy. I'm on the two robotic teams right now, and I'm very interested in reading on those teams especially as a programmer. But with that being said, I'm also interested in how a technology can play the role in education. So I'm looking forward to what you have to say.
What is all great perspective to have? And you're seeing any Spanish supporters with you? Um, well, welcome. So glad you're there with us to go out. So exciting, sustainability, um, and yeah, technology, new voices to add to our table. We're happy to have you and eager to have the contribution. Your process has got much to bring student voice to the board and we. Okay, we are going to move into public comments. Our vice chair, Benham, is going to call your name as you call. You're asked to come to this table in the in front of me and state your name for the record. We give you three minutes for public comments. If you do start to run beyond that, I will signal you and ask that you wrap up your final thought.
Tech Speaker is Martin Nekker. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, Dr. Solis, Dr. Walton, my name is Martin Nekker. I am a rank and file member of the Harper Federation of Substitute Teachers and also a VOTech sub as well. I'm here today to speak once again on behalf of the substitute teachers, the vocational technical school system, and the need for a loan overdue pay raise and other much needed benefits. Over the past 12 years, the substitute teachers of the VOTech system have had no pay raise. In fact, we took a 15% pay cutback in 2012 to 2016, along with recent hires having to lose their pensions to a 401K plan. The cost of living has risen over the past 10 years. Inflation increased to 7% over the past two years. The minimum wage has risen to nearly $15 an hour and gasoline prices have soared. This is reflected in the exhibit one of the Consumer Price Index, which you have, which depicts the value of $155 in 2010 compared to what it is today. On the social side, VOTech substitute teachers must fulfill state mandates to have a minimum bachelor's degree. Pay to be fingerprinted must pass every year the state schools testing. Also, we must face dangers in the schools where our colleague Lauren Rousseau was killed in Newtown in 2012, while other substitute teachers were killed in Texas in 2018 and one nearly killed in New Mexico a few years ago. Locally, tech schools in the past several years have had no ad to close early at times due to the lack of enough staff and substitute teachers to cover for them. The result of this has forced school districts to raise salaries for substitute teachers where Hartford School District Exhibit Two and East Windsor's Exhibit Three depict salary increases that will exceed the VOTech rate. The S V F T Local 144208 Contract and Appendix Estates, the State Board is responsible for setting substitute teacher compensation rates. With this substitute teacher contractual language in mind and many substitute teachers approaching me about changes in wage and benefit structure, we make the following proposal, Exhibit Four. One, a 4% increase in salary for each year retroactively through 2022 to 2025 contract years. And three, a new full-time building sub or associate teacher position with full-time pay and benefits should be open to each school. Substitute teachers who work every day of the school year should be paid both full-time pay and benefits. All substitute teachers should be in the tiers to a pension system. In conclusion, substitute teachers are fed up with being the first to be put under the meat cleaver when budget cuts are made as they were back in 2012 and continue to be today with no pay increase in over 10 years and now their pensions being taken away as of 2017 for 401K plans that put us at higher financial risk and costs. It is time for this board and leadership of VOTech to immediately address the substitute teacher compensation issue. S V F T's leadership has advocated their responsibility to represent us on this problem while their hardworking, rank and file teachers were forced to lose planning time filling in for substitute teachers when substitute teachers were not available. We certainly hoping that cooperation will once again move the board to examine the exhibits and act on the substitute teacher pay and compensation proposals promptly. If this proposal is approved, it should help to attract, recruit, retain new substitute teachers in the VOTech system. Thank you and good day.
Thank you. I apologize in advance for this announcement. In hot value.
Yes. Where are these things called stuff? From Seekart Gallery. First of all, good morning, everyone. I'm a city council member in Norwich and I have also served as Board of Education member in Norwich. So I do applaud your service to our community and to our state. I'm here today to talk about who seeks are. Sikhism is the fifth largest independent ethnic religion. It is not branch of any other faith. All the initiated Sikhs have five articles of faith that they carry with them all the time, which we consider as a daily reminder to us. They are also known as five Ks. Karas, which is a bracelet, is a reminder that we have to do what's right. Then we have a comb, which is known as kanga, which is a daily reminder for cleanliness and keep our surroundings clean. Then we have age, which means unshone hair, which is a reminder for spirituality. Then we have kashara, which is long underpants, and it's a symbol for modesty. And the fifth one is kirpan. Kirpan is a small symbol like this, and it's a symbol for social justice. And if we see something wrong, we say it. So these are daily reminders for all the Sikhs. Myself being initiated Sikh carried all the time. Some of the issues which our students are facing in the school district is accommodation for their articles of faith. And eventually they do get accommodation because foundation of our country is based upon religious freedom. But it's a hassle that they have to go through in every school district, which we don't mind. We will follow the process, but the Norwich School District has recognized kirpan in the exemption list of deadly weapon policy because we don't treat it as a weapon. For us, it's article of faith. And the request we are here to make to in front of all of you is if you do something in your policy, that will trickle down to all 169 towns. And that will make our lives very easy. And our kids will not feel shy of ages to follow their faith or just to get initiated. It does affect their mental health in a negative way when they have to go through all this. So we are humbly here as a community to make that request to you. Also, I want to share that Danbury and Milford was very accommodating. And Norwich Public School already made their policy to accommodate kirpan. But something from your office will be very appropriate on this education. There is a Department of Justice website, and I have shared the brochures which are on Department of Justice website for education of kirpan and for education of teachers when we just known as the stock. And even if we share those links with our school districts, at least they will have exposure for these articles of faith. But I have also participated in A M's program, which also if we go into, like we came to this building or we go to Capitol or we go to Reagan Building, Washington or Center House Building. So education has come to that level on higher level as well. Even when you travel on an airport, TSA people know about it.
Easy to get there, huh?
Yes. And just a few good things I want to share about Norwich as well. Our school website and city website are now accessible in 100 languages. Also, our schools and our city have recognized over 63 different cultural ways, which were also commanded by Department of Education as well from your department. But we have not recognized those days in our system as well, so maybe we should work on that as well. Thank you very much, and I'll wrap it up. And thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Christine Redstock.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Christine Redstock from Middletown. I'm also the executive director of media and communications for L G B T S United, a brand new organization. I've been one of the transsexuals in this organization. And I want to ask our Connecticut State Board of Education, thank you for doing a good job each and every year. But I wanted to ask you as a collective pull to call on our state legislature to help repeal the brand new law effective that mandates feminine products from grades three to 12 in our government public schools to be in not only girls bathrooms, gender neutral rooms, but some boys bathrooms as well. This new law that we have been deemed is called the tampon law. We feel that such a law will maybe get girls nervous that they never seen feminine products up close, personal life inspection in the school bathroom and having boys bathroom with feminine products in them. The truth of the matter is no one born male, myself included, could get pregnant, have terries or have any need for feminine products. I don't know what message this is sending, but it's the wrong message. Let's let the kids grow up. And if we are trying to accommodate trans boys, our organization also will say, we want to say that for every trans kid, let's keep these kids in a third bathroom because they should not be on medication so they won't develop any secondary sex characteristics. And Connecticut too is one of 16 states that joined the coalition of an amendment's brief filed in support, blood law Massachusetts, school policy that supports schools withholding information on their child when they come out their gender confusion to any school official. This is leading kids down a dangerous road. Gender confusion leads to medication. Once you go down the road of puberty blockers or hormone replacement therapy, there is no turning back. Interacting a child's puberty is at the very least gambling with their long-term future health. Men like this practice study at home. We can see that if it's a child's sexual preference, yeah, okay, we can keep that from the parents right now. But that is about it. Thank you for letting me speak. Have a wonderful day, everybody.
Thank you. Honored Halti.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Mohilir Singh Halti. I'm from Norway. By faith, I'm a Sikh, S I K H. And by profession, I'm an engineer. I went to school in this part of the world. My kids were born here, they're brought up here, they went to schools. They also practice in Sikh here as well, just like I am. They're in medical field, they're in the daily field, they're in education field. In fact, my job is a teacher, school teacher. And I have learned that education, we all are educated people sitting here, and we educate us everybody else in this world here. I have learned that education is the most powerful weapon, which we all can use to change the order. This was quite helpful. Working with Norwich School District that changed their policy on Sikh accommodating articles of faith, including kirpan. So it's quite helpful last year in Danbury School District. It was quite helpful this year, in fact, just. But I'm here today to share with you, there are 169 school districts in the state of Connecticut, and we work only with three. 169, we have a long way to go. How many years it will take, I don't know. Any time, any school's principal, school superintendent want to know everything about it. It's not just like that here. It takes, and we have imagined 169 schools that shik here. So three were kind enough to work with us. Now, I'm here to share with you that the way the message that the State Department of Education should include the basic information about Sikhs and Sikh article of faith on their website and send this communication to all 169, including those three who already accommodated it to us, especially on kirpan and article of faith. And when we talk about the article of faith, we all know what the constitution is saying. The First Amendment allows you to practice your faith. I fully agree with that. In fact, I didn't get it myself here. I run camps, kids camp, and we have different classes, and I run the classes to teach the constitution. The basic, how the government works, what your First Amendment are, what should billify that, just for education purposes. And they love it here. So I'm here to again request you to send a communication to all 169 districts, especially for the kirpan, and also write the regulation, writing exemption, just like Norwich School District has done that here. So that we have no issues, no harassment, no intimidation to our young kids who are coming to school this year while they're practicing their faith. And this is nothing, this according to the law, this is faith, you know, plan it. This according to the constitution of this, of this country here to practice my faith here, to keep my program from my article of faith. So thank you very much for listening, and I hope that something will come out of this year. Thank you.
Christian.
Members of the Connecticut Board of Education and honored guests. I'm Mohilir Singh Halti, a proud Sikh freshman student at Joseph Warren High School in Middlesbrough, Connecticut. Thank you for granting me the privilege to speak before the esteemed board. As an initiated Sikh student, I've always been worried due to all the schools having strict policies regarding weapons, which can also result in me being punished for simply practicing a faith. Due to the school weapons and dangerous instruments policy, an initiated Sikh student in Danbury got suspended for wearing his kirpan to school. Although he was later given religious accommodation by the school, he had to go through hardship and the incident sparked concern for all Sikh initiated Sikh students in Connecticut. I also fear that others may see the kirpan as a weapon and react with fear or hostility. I don't want, I don't want to bring attention to myself or put myself or others in danger. It's a difficult decision to make, but I know that I need to follow my beliefs while also being mindful of the safety and well-being of my community. My parents decided to approach the school administrator about making accommodation for my kirpan. The whole process was such a hassle and challenge for my parents. Even after a week, they still hadn't made their decision, and the school started in two days. And if they wouldn't, if they wouldn't be able to, sorry, if they hadn't decided before school started, I wouldn't be able to go to school unless I didn't wear my kirpan. I started to get worried that I wouldn't be able to go to school on my first day of high school. Thankfully, they made a decision the day before and with some compromises, I got to go to school. This was a really tough journey for me and my parents and something that no other Sikh family with initiated Sikh children should go through. In conclusion, I urge the Board of Education to consider the significance of the kirpan to the Sikh community and the importance of religious accommodation. We live in a diverse society, and we must respect each other's beliefs and values. By accommodating the wearing of kirpons, we can promote inclusion and create a more tolerant and accepting environment for all students. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Oliver Sinney.
Honorable members of the Connecticut Board of Education and distinguished guests, good morning. I'm Lee Lee Sin, and I'm in here by profession, and I work with Freddie Mac. I would like to express my gratitude for granting me the opportunity to address you today. Earlier, members from my community provide a brief overview of the Sikh religion, its article of faith, and the challenges we face. Today, I wish to delve deeper into my personal experiences. Our great nation's constitution, of which we are proud citizens, guarantees the freedom to practice one religion without hindrance. However, I must confess that I have not always enjoyed this freedom. There are challenges and struggles. Nevertheless, I can confidently affirm that the constitution has consistently stood by me in overcoming these obstacles. Allow me to illustrate this with an example, my son, who just spoke and is an initiated Sikh wearing kirpan. We ensure to secure accommodation for him to wear his kirpan in high school. Thus, enabling him to freely practice the religion while excelling in his academics. Through this experience, I have come to understand that many of these challenges and struggles stem from a lack of education awareness about Sikhism. We engaged in several meetings with the school's principal and superintendent, primarily focused on educating them about Sikhism and articles of faith. Thankfully, the constitution supported our efforts, ultimately leading to a successful accommodation for my son, and now he is proudly going to school with his kirpan. The root of the problem lies in the prevailing ignorance about Sikhism, and the most potent tool to combat this ignorance is education. While my community has a working philosophy in this regard, I firmly believe that success in spreading this education can only be achieved with the active involvement of state institutions and establishments can be considerable influence. In closing, I humbly request the following actions from the board. The State Department of Education should include basic information about Sikhs and Sikh articles of faith on their website and within the school curriculum. There should be communication to all schools coupled with the incorporation of Sikh education in teachers and soft training programs with particular emphasis on kirpan. Consider dividing the policy regulations concerning deadly weapons to provide exception for the kirpan in the schools. I would like to share my heartfelt heartfelt thanks once more for your time and attention, and I wish you all a wonderful day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tom Chenkellin.
Good morning. I'm Trippol from Manchester, three from North York. Everyone, graduate student representatives on the board. I think I like what I've seen on the last year of our team. And you know, our works, the other places are always bigger here. And also this coming along, this is Manchester, I think you were a fan of the tech. Or is it that the commissioner, Smith in Manchester, but now he's moved on to a new position. Here today is about culture and race. I was disturbed by what happened to Crystal Love. She began to call with a slogan from this, and you call keep Connecticut white. And I'm looking at it, keep Connecticut, okay, cultural, and one of the greatest charities is because Satan is talking about Sikhism. Keep Connecticut, okay, cultural, and one of the greatest charities is because it's about Sikhism. And that we have one of the greatest borders in Connecticut, but, um, as you say, I'm not a member of the record, just being stand up to these ashes and, you know, yeah, it's fun. Never belongs to all of us, and, uh, we're not going back sixteen years with the, I would say, the issue. I followed it under, and, uh, and, uh, that was an official, um, change that happened, this assassination of Secretary Edwards sixteen years ago, it was on Kennedy. I was a twenty point in the Civil South, so I, I thought they had a total impression on, uh, me, and I don't know about her, Rustin, remember? At Marston, Washington, uh, needed to better here in the United States. And that's what I, my father's in Tony and I, and he supposed to was holding on around rural, the United States. And all his money called the Russian man who was here in Spain, and they were also in fourteen ninety-two. But all the records were displayed by, uh, King and King at that time, and there were thousands of them. Were, um, I guess, swayed, swayed by the job, he was Jewish, or, I haven't seen that at times, so. Culture, the bodies of the world, all of it, as well as, um, in our country wars, I mentioned before, there's a box in town over here in Manchester, who's, uh, that's on the special, what is in town, addition, we lost a number of men in all our country wars. They were one, they fought men, a lot of them in the Vietnam, and maybe sixty-nine thousand in the Civil War, so we, we set up the citizens of beating my to the Civil War, deceived by our Union troops, so, uh. And, uh, I think in this way, it's really, they, most of all, the cops, cops, they changed uh, don't need, um, I mean, that guy, and it's only sort of vaults and all, when it's a lot of online games, um, for, um, races, and sometimes you play too much, um, what has happened recently, the news, the shooting, so, uh, um, only able, my, there is obvious showing of, you know, respect for other, um, people in the last community. I think also, when we talk about the gymnastics system, um, okay, young, these more Christian things are safer and turning them into, uh, and incarceration. You have to, um, the gymnastics system, or parents, that can affect wearing their bikes, and coming home, and getting into school, so, I think we need to look at that whole uh, and if you got it wrong in your office, that's the, um, you know, the type of initiatives, but again, everyone on board, and that was a liberal station, um, right, uh, center.
Just like you did.
Educations, um, for all of us, so I just, you could say, um, go up to the teaching staff, and let, you know, maybe the press or secretary of education, who's running current back on the schools, they, or educators, and, um, all teachers should be supported, and parents and P D As, and, uh, and this is what I'm considering, is not really consulting. So some of all players, all pay taxes, but we, uh, better, uh, you know, educate all of our students, and, uh, we do our work. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hergen. Dr. Belinda Farberry. Andrew Funtney.
Good morning. Um, hello, good morning, sir. I think you know why I'm here. It's been seventeen months complaining, smilingly complaining about the lack of mental health services in Killingley. It's been ten months since it's four, I'm getting impartial panel. And although I've been deeply involved in what's going on, nothing has happened in the last ten months, actually. It's very important that the panel move forward on this. There are two arguments being made by the Killingley Board of Education. Argument one is mental health services, the mental health of our students is not part of the educational mission of, of Killingley schools. And the second argument they're making is you, the State Board of Education, you, uh, the State Department of Education, can't tell us what to do. Both of those arguments need to be answered resoundingly in the next. That both are not true, and that's why the impartial panel needs to move forward and act on this. Now, the, the parents, uh, citizens and students who filed the complaint, that's been intervened as a party later today, uh, the impartial panel will, will rule on that motion. Um, I'll tell you, that's become much more significant since the filing of the State Department of Education a couple of days ago. The filing talked about some lawful initiatives that were put together by the hard work of Kim Traverso in this, in this organization and Katie Coe, um, in Killingley Public Schools. Sadly, from the point of view of students and parents in Killingley, there's no evidence of any change. There's no evidence that the, uh, mental health services being provided are accessible, there are no referral forms. There is no change in the current situation, which is an utter quasity of mental health services in Killingley. So, um, I recognize that I should be speaking to the impartial panel and to the full board, but I just, um, I'm also not there, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to make the point that we've, that the board's got to move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. Uh, we certainly appreciate all members of the public to take their time to come and express their thoughts and opinions with us. Um, the, there was, one of which is on the agenda today, which is to discuss the Killingley matter, but, um, everything that was raised today will be taken under advisement by the appropriate, uh, appropriate committee. So, thank you.
Um, I have some extra lectures. If you want, I can leave it here for.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's, uh, my former members know that it's left here, that will, that information will be shared. If you have other copies, that would be great as well. Additional information provided.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, we are going to take, uh, a few, um, we're going to do a few changes and liberties with the agenda today to um, make sure the folks that have traveled to be with us are having a community heard earlier on. Um, but we do need to go into executive session first um, to act on personnel matter, which is discussion of agenda item seven H. So ask the public to indulge us, um, while we take a vote to go into executive session. Um, and when we come back, um, please trust that, uh, if I know you're here from the public on a matter, I am going to try to move it uh, earlier on the agenda after that point. So the chair wants to make a motion, um, for item number three, to go into executive session, to, to, to discuss the personnel matter, discussion of agenda item seven H. Is there a motion?
No.
It's been moved improperly, properly seconded. Um, we will be in executive session, and we'll return here. Uh, we're going to. I vote to, uh, exit executive session. Is there a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let the record reflect, we have returned from executive session at ten thirty-five, with no actions being taken in executive session. Um, and I will adjust the agenda just slightly to take up item seven H, uh, which is the personnel appointment, deputy point. Commissioner, would you like to call to the, to the table?
Thank you, Dr. Chair, if you want. I'd like to call back to talk to you, to join us at the table.
I understand you have a recommendation to make.
I have a recommendation to make, and I have a nice big pile on my desk. I'd like to recommend that the board adopt the commissioner's recommendations and appoint Dr. Chopper to Connecticut State Department of Education. Dr. Hughes, uh, will have oversight, uh, several areas of responsibility in the agency. The performance office, the academic office, tournament office, and C P H plans and partnerships. Deputy Hughes comes to us as an assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction and assessment. The coachess of public school, where he served as acting principal, director of teaching and learning, uh, assistant principal, and had a teach, in teaching positions, as a lecturer at the Connecticut, uh, Connecticut State, um, Central Connecticut State University, and also was a social studies teacher by trade. Uh, within his experience and skill set, that he brings to the table as a curriculum developer, uh, database, decision maker, instructional technology leader, and workforce development, uh, expert, uh, along with financial management. Dr. Hughes, uh, will be a great addition to the agency in joining our current deputy commissioner for educational support and wellness in augmenting the work of the agency, and especially with the upcoming, uh, approval, uh, in the bottom of the stock of state plan for education that aside with where we are, and so that is my recommendation to the fourth chair.
Thank you. Um, and Dr. Hughes is right there. Uh, we'd love, uh, thank you for being here. Um, it was a pleasure to be able to chat with you in executive session, but I'd like to get on the record, uh, if you would, uh, your introduction of yourself, and, uh, please comment as to why you're in this position.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Commissioner, as well. Thank you to the full board. Uh, it's quite an opportunity, uh, and one that I'm really excited about. Um, certainly, as the Commissioner mentioned, a skill set and experience in the design of curriculum uh, with an awareness of workforce development. I'm excited to connect with the very expert team that is already established here at the state. Um, and the hope is that, uh, I can serve the students and the families and the communities of, of, oh, almost a coach, I did, I have a, oh, I'll have to change my language. Um, but I am very excited nonetheless, uh, at the opportunity, um, to serve the state of Connecticut, uh, in this role. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, or, are there any, um, I think I need a motion on this matter, uh, before I open it up to your questions. Is there a motion? On four and seven each. Thank you. Moved to the second? Moved in properly seconded. Are there any questions? All right. Well, we had a very full and robust discussion, um, within, uh, executive session, uh, around Dr. Hughes' background, um, around his, uh, alignment of his background to the, the role that is in front of him, um, as he's just sharing with you, around what interests him about coming to this role. Um, and we are excited to bring this forward. So seeing no other questions? All right, I will call the vote then on item seven H, which is the personnel appointment of the Deputy Commissioner of Academic and Innovation, Dr. Charles E. Hughes. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations. And you'll start now? You've got it off the ready, it's like, cool. Thank you so much. It was important working with you. Uh, any, any family or supporters with you?
Uh, mine.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, um, we can take care of item seven, uh, I'm sorry, item four A, um, considers the minutes from the June fourteenth State Department of Education meeting. Is there a motion? Been moved in properly seconded. Are there any, uh, corrections or edits required? Seeing none, all those in favor of item four A, uh, adoption of the June fourteenth State Department of Education meeting, meeting minutes? Do you feel both side of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, item four B, uh, approval of the minutes from the June thirtieth, section ten four B, impartial hearing panel meeting. Is there a motion?
No.
Second.
Moved in properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, the board will, the chair will call the vote for the, uh, item four B, the June thirtieth minutes from the section ten four B, impartial hearing panel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And item four C, uh, the meeting minutes of the August second, twenty twenty-three, section ten four B, impartial hearing panel meeting. Is there a motion? Seeing none, all the vote, uh, for approval of the August second, um, meeting minutes from the section ten four B, impartial hearing panel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Very good. Thank you. Motion carried. All right. Um, so just briefly, um, uh, a few, it's been a while since we were around this table, a whole sun summer, so what, the twenty-first been around? Uh, but, but welcome back, um, and welcome to our newest member, again, it's wonderful to have you at the table. Um, and we know that we are, um, not, not around the table. Um, is our board member, Awilie Rastow, who tendered her resignation, uh, over the summer month, and we will recognize her, but uh, we wish her well, and, uh, although she will not be with us at this table, we know she'll continue to do the work for um, uh, students at the higher level that she continues to serve at, at Central Connecticut. Uh, since we last met, uh, I know that myself, Vice Chair Benham, and, and many board members, though, have been, um, busy with the work of this board in lots of different ways, um, including, um, uh, Vice Chair Benham and, uh, Board Member Ashley and I were able to join our commissioner at her, uh, welcome back, um, event for superintendents, and, um, it was a really wonderful morning session at Berlin High School with superintendents ranging from those who are newly appointed to those who are well-tenured, um, coming together to hear the message of our commissioner, um, around her theme of unlimited possibility. Um, and I love that theme, um, for the year, uh, I'm gonna let go of Skye's, however, uh, where there is no vision, there is no hope. Um, so as we are taking on our new, our new work and thinking about unlimited possibilities, I know that will bring great vision, um, to that. I encourage each of our committee chairs who've been, uh, reappointed, um, to their roles um, around, um, uh, accountability and support, um, continuing in that chair role, Vice Chair Benham, around economic standards and assessments. Um, Board Member Clemens continuing to be there, around legislation and policy initiatives, with Board Member C D continuing to be there, and keeping us physically sound, um, under the leadership of Board Member, um, Don Harris. Um, I know that he'll continue to bring vision to that work, um, as well as we seek unlimited possibilities. Um, and our work in collaboration with, with SERF, or with, uh, N A S D Y, or any of the other committees and councils that we serve, um, excited to bring that vision to the draft five-year plan, which is currently available for our public review and comment, and really do hope to get public comment and review on that. Um, we will, uh, take on a, a new title and framing for our five-year plan, as indicated in the version that is out for you to review, but, um, it continues our pursuit of equity and excellence, um, in the work. Um, things that we are exploring around, uh, students' bill of rights for multilingual learners that will come to, um, in Massachusetts. Commitment to children, being educated as whole children, uh, with access to quality mental health supports, all those remain high on our agenda as a board. Um, and I hope we'll continue to maintain that here as we do this incredibly challenging work um, and take on, uh, modernizing our teacher certification process. Uh, if you continue, can, can consider the matters in front of us around the Killingley complaint, um, reviewing, um, the existing educator prep programs that's on our agenda for today, approvals of math equity statement that we'll take up later on, um, and as we take on the accountability results for last school year. Um, I do want you to know, and, uh, in the time it's been away, um, the work with N A S D Y has, um, has continued, including our own Vice Chair Benham being nominated, um, for a position on the N A S D Y board. So that vote comes up in October, I believe. Is that right? In October, so congratulations, um, on that nomination, and, uh, we look forward to, um, I believe it's uncontested. But it's been pretty fortunate to be graduating all right. But we look forward to your, to your service there, um, and to, to Mr. Xley who's continued to, to serve, uh, in his role there. Um, so with, uh, with that, let's keep hearing our vision, um, and our hope to the five hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and thirteen students. I hope that number's not going to fade. If new students come as the equal number I've graduated, uh, because I really like five thirteen, five thirteen. Um, all right, let's see. I know, uh, I also wanted to highlight, um, uh, Vice Chair Benham has also been well representing us, um, in addition to the Commission of Back to School, and on the new, um, um, uh, teacher certification, and teacher certification council. Um, she has also been representing us at the Asian American Pacific Islander Educational Symposium, um, doing work with UCOM and the Asian American Studies Institute, um, and recently attended, uh, the complication, uh, in New Haven, so thank you for those, those, um, uh, acts as well. Uh, so with that, I'm going to take a few, uh, points of, of liberty here so that we can act on some things um, where we said somebody is here. Um, so I think we'll move to item uh, seven A, no, seven B, right? Okay, seven B, I think we're going to go for that. Seven B. So. Okay, seven B, I think we're going to go to that. Seven B. So when I leave the party and ask them, I'd like to go to seven B, continuing approval of the Office of Higher Education Alternative Route to Certification Education Prep Program. Is there a motion? On that program?
Good morning, Chairman Dwight Walton, Vice Chair Benham and board members. Today we're here to share information on the Office of Higher Education's Alternative Route to Certification ARC Program. This program was established in 1987, was the first ARC program in the state and has operated for over 35 years. In your packet, you receive the board report as well as a link to Council for Accreditation of Educated Preparation Report, which outlines six areas of improvement, standard four not being met and a stipulation cited for standard five. To share with you their performance improvement plan to address the deficiencies as cited by Kate, you will now hear from Tim Larson, Jennifer Delaney, and Jacqueline Lousier.
Hello. Good morning. How is my voice now?
Good.
So. Okay, thank you for the introduction. We, I am Jennifer Delaney. I am the newly appointed Program Director for the Alternative Route to Certification. I started six months ago. I did the program in 2008. So for the last six years, I've been a 12 educator, coach, and school administrator. And I'm very, very proud of this program and what it does for our students. So I would just like to, for a few little backgrounds, I know our program works. We are a nine-month higher ed program. Every year, we graduate between 85 and 100 graduates. Currently, we have deducted 95 attendees and 40% of whom identified as racially identity diverse, which is huge for me, being the first keynote director of this program, having been an EFL student myself. So I'm very proud of that work that recruiting has garnered so far. And our program operates in a hybrid model, which is COVID, which has a further reach across the state, which is a tactic. We have three people who operate this program, myself being director, and that have a program career and help initiate a position. All the rest of our employees are actually members of the UCF and personal service ingredients, and they work with us part-time. So I think a really, really benefit our program is that the people who are instructing the candidates getting through this very intensive process are actually currently in schools and working in the field. We have 15 faculty members, and then during practice, when the candidates get a chance to get into practice for eight weeks, we also have 90 half-ready teachers and 27 in practice who may be allocated to go to the field, 2000 teachers in the field. So this is a little structure, structure of our, a little background and structure of our program. And so, recent history, in 2020, there was kind of a reset in the program. Two new employees were hired, my predecessor and a new preliminary coordinator. And the work that they really concentrated and focused on in those two years before I arrived was around the items one, two, and three. And so when I came on in February, as you can imagine, when you're going into a role like that, you are looking forward to finding out about your program, what you're experiencing, what is the work that has been being done, that you need to honor moving forward. So I will continue to do that, working in standards one, two, and three, and then bring the efficiency in standards four and five to levels of proficiency. So the timeline for the key reviews, it's about 18 months before the site is in, and then they come and visit your site and provide you with feedback. And so it was a blessing for me when I came because it really helped me see exactly where the program stands and where I need to go with it and my program improvement planning. So I was quite relieved that when I arrived, I saw right away that the standards one, two, and three were really quite solid. No stipulation, no areas of deficiency, no period. And the reason why I'm saying that is because those are the standards that truly help you make certain that your candidate are ready for the classroom. Here is one that you really focus on, the alignment of curriculum, teaching standards, learning correction, the complexity of the learning and the program of build throughout the nine months. And the clinical experiences are very key so that candidates have opportunities towards the change and refine their practice before they go on the first day and into classroom norm. So as Dr. Tucker stated, we do have some areas of improvement, and in the way that work to keep identifying areas they'd like to work on to get even better, that get to levels of best practice. And you have seven years to improve on those before they come back. However, we do have four stipulations, and you have two years of appropriate student stipulation to show growth and that you are making strides toward bringing those levels to two levels of proficiency. So we will have that a bit of it coming up in the fall to demonstrate what we have done so far in my platform. So when I came here, I did what any new leader does, right? I have the community working part, right? Six, 12 months, that's what you're doing in the beginning. So not only I had to jump in and create a program improvement plan, I interacted with everyone within our organization, I analyzed, consulted, and finally gathered with my team, and I created a program improvement plan, much in your slide editor reviews, whenever you find it. And the goals are designed around the evaluation that we need to teach our kids. So the priority goal in standard four and five for our program that we operate on, over the next two years, really the key takeaway in standard four is that we have to be able to demonstrate to kids and to the community that our competitors or our graduates from our program, once they leave our program, what is their structural impact on the students of their state, how do they contribute to student development. And we have to show our, that we have to showcase that our competitors and their employers or the school district are satisfied with the preparation coming from our program with their education. So the action items that I want to highlight several, the one that I'd like to highlight in this time, is on slide 11, actually I have two, talks about how we will establish, because currently it is efficient, you don't have an established way of interacting with our graduates. So we need to establish a clear or graduated participation program in which we have decided to go with a teacher induction program. And that will enable us to interact and gather data from our competitors by providing them with a session level and a travel activity teachers. We will create mentoring opportunities. It's a very fast program. We are doing it in really eight and a half months. What many people have sophomore, freshman, freshman, junior, senior year to do in a four-year program, right? So they, we need a lot of help and mentorship to get into the field. So that's something that we're really excited about. And then action I have agreed in slide 12, which is also related to standard four, talks about how we're going to establish and maintain relationships with the district. Because again, we have to make sure that we are getting feedback from the school district and from the State Department of Education on our plan and the performance that our candidates have once they get into the field. And so we need to create a functioning advisory board and also start doing some research around our graduates with a case study, interviews, panel discussion, focus groups, and touch. So that's the board and the highlights of our action plan and what we need to choose to build up the efficiency towards proficiency next year. And then we have one stipulation in standard five, we have to cover a dress. And in that, the other key takeaway there is that we have to demonstrate that our program makes data-driven decisions with valid data. That is the critical component of that stipulation. And so one of the main things that really gets upon several other standards is we really have to make sure that we are developing inter-regional diversity with our program. If you remember, initially we have 16 part-time faculty members and then about 125 people in the field. And so we need to make sure that those people are calibrated at our key assessments when we're using the CTE rubric within our program to make sure that the candidates are ready for the classroom. So we've begun that work already, that's something we've already tried on. I've been designing exactly the work rate, which happened in August, and have done those calibration exercises and look for. And we'll be doing that every two months in a cyclical basis through our program. I have also hired a new part-time support specialist who will be working on the field quality assurance or ensuring viability amongst the field, and I have plans for that. And then the next two steps we'll have to make is making sure that all of our key assessments within our program that progress and competency over time are valid and viable. They're going to have to go through the validity, validity and viability studies in the next two years, and then on a cyclical basis, to make sure the work comes to be relevant to the of the current times. And we will need to take all of the surveys that we utilize to gather feedback from the field as well as all of our government, and make them aligned to the end over the course of the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the, I'm sorry, so I didn't know if you wanted to ask. Is that either of you want to ask?
First of all, thank you for having us. And clearly, we appreciate the efforts and the work that you folks are doing on behalf of the state of Connecticut. My name's Tim Larson. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of Higher Education. And since taking over about five years ago, our office has really understood this program and the rationale of ratcheting up the quality and the assessments that we're making. And so, you know, Jennifer's put together a really compact slide presentation today. I mean, slide six shows you where our inconsistencies are, and then everything else will back up the direction of where we need to be. And we're really excited about the opportunities that we bring. We know how important it is to get quality teachers back into the classroom, and we think we've done a great job over the last five years. We put approximately 500 educators in the classroom with somewhere between 12 and 17% minority participation. So we have an eye on the ball, and we want to really do the hard work that's required to keep this program up to speed and moving ahead. And Jennifer has been targeted. We've had two great graduation ceremonies at the Armory. It's really inspiring to me as some of these educators talk to the students and say, welcome aboard, colleagues. So we know what the mission is, and we're going to do our due diligence to make sure it gets done correctly.
Thank you. The board members gave a recommendation in front of us to grant probationary approval to the Connecticut Office of Higher Education Alternative Route to Certification Program. Are there questions?
Good morning.
Turn it up.
Just raise it. I happen to know several educators who have come through your program, and most of them have, are at high level leadership positions in education. But you didn't say anything about my understanding of this program to enable people from other professions to become teachers, right?
Yes. So our program is a postgraduate program. So we, we offer an option for people who did not decide to become teachers during their undergrad years. And actually, many of our candidates have come with masters, doctorates, actually we have ten doctors, and had attendants last year, federal lawyers, people who attended small trade. It's very much a great avenue for career changers, myself included. Some, I decided so too late myself that, oh, that's what I definitely wanted to do. So I utilize for next year. Yes, so the statement prepared about 5,000 educators through this program, this inception, and that of all of us, our key graduate smart, we are in a really good shape in regard to the preparation for higher levels of leadership with our colleagues, superintendents, principals, directors, many, many people who continue their education and leadership roles after our, yes.
Any other questions? All right, and I will call the vote on this item, which is again, item seven B, continuing approval of the Office of Higher Education Alternative Route to Certification Education Preparation Program. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, good luck executing your plan. We look forward to the progress.
Thank you. I'm really forward to it.
Let me jump around. I gotta, make sure I'm not skipping anything. Okay, so let us go to item seven D, as I see visitors here for that, which is approval of a material change to Booker T. Washington Academy, excuse me, Academy in New Haven. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Thank you. Please feel free to join us at the table. All right, so we have a matter in front of us approving the charter amendment proposal for Booker T. Washington to contact our whole school management services with Elevate Charter Schools. Erica, that is.
Thank you, Commissioner Dwight Tucker, Board Chair Dwight Walton, and Board Members. I'm joined by my colleague, Robert Kelly, Program Manager for Charter Schools, and Dr. Belinda Carberry, the interim director, Executive Director of Booker T. Washington Academy, a charter school in Union, Connecticut. In your board packet is a request to approve the charter amendment proposal for Booker T. Washington Academy to contact for whole school management services with Elevate Charter Schools. As stated on page one, by contacting with Elevate Charter Schools, Booker T. Washington Academy will transition from self-management to contact with Elevate to support high-quality teaching and learning, provide access to additional resources, and expand operational support. If approved, the CSE will review the contract for whole school management services between Booker T. Washington Academy and Elevate Charter Schools to ensure compliance, and will plan to present that contact to the State Board for review and approval. We are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And Dr. Carter, do you want to, is there anything?
Well, I would like to say that I am honored to be here because I am one of the founding members of Booker T. Washington. I sat in this place, I think the other building, when we first had a vision for opening Booker T. Washington. And in that space, we hired a young principal who actually was able to share our vision for improving teaching and learning and having students learn in a safe and orderly environment. And this individual has moved on and has become the founder of Elevate Charter School Management. And I have full confidence in the history of his expertise in education and sharing the vision of Booker T. Washington, that we should continue to work. as we plan to improve our challenges in the future.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions on this proposal? And then, as I understand, another action would be brought to us later once you've reviewed. Is that, is that what I'm?
Review of that, and then bring that back to you for review and approval.
All right, so this is authorizing the change in school management. Okay, great. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, I was kind of puzzled by this. This resolution says we approve the charter amendment so they can contract, but we're not approving contracts.
Not at this time.
Not quite agree why we're doing the two things separately, but it doesn't matter. But if. I said, I was curious as to why this is a two-step process, of course.
It, well, that's just how, Alan, that's just how the, it's set for. At first, have to get permission by way of the State Board of Education to make this material change, in this case, as the report indicates. You're ultimately entered into a contract with Elevate Charter Schools. Once they have the approval from this board to move forward with such negotiations and execution of a contract, then it does come back before the board so that the board can approve, disapprove, whatever, which is to approve the contract. That's just the way it's set up in law.
Harvey, it's made a question delay.
Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the material change for the Booker T. Washington Academy? Please just go by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We look forward to seeing you again and move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to move to Item 7F. Consideration of the Hampden Addendum to the Racial Imbalance Plan. Again, I believe we've got visitors, so I want to move that one next. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Thank you, moving properly seconded. If the team could join us for Item 7F. Welcome to our friends from Hampden. I understand there is an addendum being proposed to the previously approved racial imbalance plan.
Yes, thank you very much, board members. The Legislation and Policy Development Committee had met last year with Hampden and had a discussion with Superintendent Heitzman regarding their racial imbalance plan and the progress of the district in meeting both that requirement. They, at that meeting, Superintendent Heitzman indicated that some circumstances have changed in the district, and they were looking at making some changes to their plan. At that time, the committee recommended that he develop, in conjunction with his board, an amendment to the plan to be presented to you for approval. So, today, we have the addendum to the plan, which is attached to the board report, and Superintendent Heitzman is here today to discuss it with you, and you are joined by their Board Chair of Hampden, Floris St. Kaplan.
I do appreciate the game room design of the room. And the words I'm having a conversation with. I want to, for the sake of saving people's time, but not to go over the entire package of attention, but it is important for me to contextualize the conversation. So, I just want to first talk about, you know, what the core foundational aspects to the initial plan was, or, and then talk to you about where we're building to this end of this one. And then, finish this up by talking about where we're going in terms of our forward move. So, when I came here, at, through the presentation on November 2nd, to the board, the Hampden Board was fully supportive of moving sixth grade to Hampden Middle School, despite the fact that there were significant cost increase in doing so. That initial plan began around 2017, 2018. And between that time of the approval and COVID coming, and then trying to re-engage that process, the cost of doing business and construction increased significantly. So, that is one part, to take what is now a seventh and eighth grade middle school of over 900 students, and then add those two elementary schools. Then, the third part of that was the petition of the transfer of winter degree facility to Hampden Public Schools. The fourth was developing proposals for inter-district magnet program to be approved by the Hampden Board of Education. And the last component of that was developing a district-wide pre-K program to be approved by the Hampden Board of Education. And in an attempt to address all these concerns, the Hampden University Advisory Council, or ASAC for short, was created to aid the community in the process of reimagining and restructuring results for equity and diversity in Hampden. It had about 70 members, including parents, teachers, students, administrators, and community advocates. That group first met in February of 2020, and then a month later, the pandemic happened, so they moved to an online version. So, that's where the plan was, starting around 2017. Let me tell you where all those ideas are in 2023. So, not unlike many districts across the state of Connecticut, Hampden Public Schools faces a significant fiscal cliff for the 2023, 2024 school year. The amount we needed to maintain our current level of services in the district with no one programming and no one hiring was about $8.9 million more than the prior year's salary cost. In addition to that, and subsequent to my budget presentation forward, we found out that winter degree schools was bought by ASIS, sold by the town to ASIS because our students were in winter degree, and because it was moving into Hampden. That caused us to have to spend over half a million dollars in resources we didn't know we had to spend because our students needed to be transported. And we were faced with requiring the board to make some difficult choices, one of which was not to pursue an addition like the sixth grade to Hampden Middle School. As it relates to the closing of two elementary schools, subsequent to the board's approval of that plan, the board revisited its decision to impart to a change in the composition of the board's membership, various constituent groups at both schools. Those groups were clear and unambiguous about the important role these two schools played in their various communities. Parents, students, and backwards here, these schools wanted their schools to stay as they were despite concerns about racial imbalance. The third part of that, the transfer of the winter degree facility, so it's incorporated to Hampden Public Schools. Winter degree did come back to the district. We moved it temporarily to house our Hampden Early Learning Program, HEL for short, as well as our secondary alternative school program, Hampden Collaborative Learning Center, ACLC for short, and our IIC classes. IIC classes are an acronym for instructional intervention centers. And those instructional intervention centers are designed to prevent students from being outplaced, to prevent the cost of the outplacement, and to provide them an education in their home district with the quality of services that they deserve. So, in many instances, that population of students would have been recommended for outplacement. So, in the school year 22, 23, the town of Hampden decided to sell winter degree back to ASIS, effective July 1, 2023, which required us to move all our existing programs from that school and find permanent educational settings, programs within our existing district. It's awesome that you cannot therefore close the two elementary schools that you intended to close from the beginning. The fourth part of that was developing a proposal for an inter-district magnet program. The Board of Ed, as well as Lieutenant and Attorney Bullock, determined that that option is not just as feasible per review of the board's ability and pay for the State Department of Education's ability to provide support. The fifth, the fifth part was expanding pre-K. We currently have the HEL program, which is about 90 slots, and child daycare contracts, which we've got in daycare. And the high nursery school laboratory school is also a resource for parents. We have an integrated pre-K program in Alice Pack Learning Center with certified teachers, with students who must be three and a half years old and high-trained for 10. So, as mentioned earlier, this, we, when winter degree schools sold to ASIS, we were required to move the programming from there to our other district schools. When winter degree was sold, we had to find 10 classrooms in our existing elementary schools for the IIC classes. Those IIC classes are not just standard classrooms. They have to, in many cases, be modified in order to be supported by students with their disabilities. We also had to relocate our alternative secondary education program, which, when combined with the need to increase the number of preschool special education programs due to increased median district, made it impossible to find classrooms in order to expand the traditional preschool classrooms in our district. So, that's where we were. I need to mention to you all the changes at the executive leadership level. I came in September 1st of 2022, I think. You know, when you're a superintendent, it's more like dog years than human years, so it feels like that. So, I came in, also coming in at the same time with me were two assistant superintendents. So, we all came in, moved to those positions, despite the fact that we had been in the district for a little while. We also had hired three special education administrators, another elementary principal, and additional hiring that takes place. On top of that, we had times to get a more uniform schedule for this coming school year. So, how are we planning to address racially balancing of schools? In 2017, the Hampden Board of Education engaged the Services District Management Group, or DMG for short, in order to develop a group, a blueprint to address changes needed to address the shift in demographics and funding while continuing to advance student academic performance. Given that that study was conducted five years ago, we will re-engage the services of DMG, providing us with research from successful racially balancing plans from across the country and working with administration to develop a comprehensive plan for racial balancing that is specifically suited for Hampden Public Schools. I just want to give you an example of what the draft proposal looks like. As that comes around, I'll just, I'll talk you through it for a minute. So, as that comes around, I just really want to pay your attention to Phase 1, the diagnostic part of it. I just want to be clear that for us, if we're going to racially balance schools, it's not going to be done in the vacuum. It'll be done in context of trying to make systemic changes across the district. So, we're not just focusing specifically and unilaterally on racially balanced schools. So, we're also asking ourselves about what sort of programmatic and systemic change we have to make concurrently with that. So, if you look at Phase 1, which is diagnostic, we have to understand everything that we have in order to understand where we're going. So, we're looking forward to having DMG do a significant diagnostic assessment of our schools. So, it's good to have a third party do that so that you're not in any way blinded by your own internal beliefs. So, it's good to have a third party take a look at your schools. And you see here, number one, they're creating, will create a guiding coalition that will be a diverse group of people, both culturally and otherwise, in terms of the work that they do, the rules that they play in our particular school community, to help get us a framework for where we want to go. The focus groups are introducing key stakeholders, which we see in number two. Really extremely important, because I think for the most part, that's still the real information about what the community is looking for, and what schools, what resources are looking for, or come from. They'll then analyze district enrollment over the last five, seven, or 10 years to be able to give us some idea about what the projections are. Now, I will tell you this, I've read all the reports regarding where prior projections thought we were going. But you don't take into account the pandemic, that changes things. But even after, including the pandemic, the projections that we had at that time have had fewer students, more actually seeing more students in our district. You see, number four is to synthesize research of similar districts. It's very important not for us to just, not just look at sort of Enfield and other districts in the state of Connecticut who have been successful in racially balancing schools, but to take a look across the country at districts that have similar demographics, that have similar population, to see how they were able to successfully racially balance schools. DMG works with many districts across the country, so they have access, first-hand information, and direct access to all that information and the processes as well. Then, a report will be given that will present the findings to determine where we want to go. That would then take us into Phase 2, and that would then take us into Phase 3. So, in terms of developing a racial plan, you can see the Board Chair's desire to make sure that any plan that is developed is generic and organic, and it's organic, and it comes from the community and not to the community. So, we have to hear everything that we knew we had to secure funding to do it, and that was a lovely, what we could provide in our operating budget. So, we were able to provide and secure funding for this consultancy for DMG as part of an agreement with the town of Hampden regarding the use of proceeds from the sale of winter degree school. And specifically, we entered into an MOU for the town's legislative council regarding how our proportion that we got for the sale of winter degree would be used. Initially, it was a belief that those resources could only be used for capital fund projects. I didn't believe that to be the truth, so we did a fair amount of research and engaged with the council to determine that it was appropriate as a one-time payment to the board, that the board could use that money to help with operational expenses as well, without it impacting the minimum budget requirement for the town. So, once we were able to do that, the commitment we made at that time that some of those resources could be used in order to do racial balancing, just to give you an idea of how serious they were taken, how seriously they were taken. So, I was just reading the one sentence from the MOU that we signed. So, it was part A, number six, to develop, part of those resources will be used to develop, and to the extent practicable, implement a racial balancing plan as required by Connecticut State Board of Education. So, we're optimistic that we're going to be able to do that because we have funding for the winter degree school in order to make sure we're able to do what we want to do. We're also going to use Thought Exchange and Survey Monkey to gather more recent community data regarding racially balancing efforts. We currently contract with Thought Exchange and subscribe for a more expanded version of Survey Monkey in order to have the appropriate computer-based platform to solicit community input regarding the development of a racial balancing plan. Community conversations throughout the district in regards to racially balancing are essential in order for us to inform the reports and inform the board's decisions. Now, Thought Exchange is a comprehensive survey platform that uses sophisticated analytics and secure open AI integration to provide us with deeper insight into the community's thinking. The third sort of major aspect of this is to, for us to hire a diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility director that would, because given the significant time, energy, and activities involved in this, it'd be difficult for me to sit here and tell you that executive leadership has the capacity to do this on our own. We don't have the capacity to do this sort of work on our own. So, we want to make sure that we have somebody whose job it is to take a look at this, will be spending most of their time to oversee this as we go about it, to make sure that we're going about it the right way. So, in summary, when I was here in November, I explained the significant leadership change that took place throughout our school district last year. When coupled with the typical changes that a district like Hampden faces each and every year, including unprecedented fiscal challenges that required me to eliminate 16 full-time positions in the district, two of which were administrative positions, we simply do not have the capacity to give our full attention to the racial balancing plan. However, when negotiating with the town of Hampden, leadership regardless of developing a racial balancing plan by writing back to the agreement as I just demonstrated. Hampden Board of Education Chairperson Melissa Kaplan has been and continues to be a staunch advocate for racially balanced schools, and doing that in a way where it's not just black and brown children who are impacted, but the entire district would need to be impacted. And as a body, the Board of Education remains committed to implementing a sensible and coherent plan. As superintendent, I remain committed to working with all stakeholders in doing the incredibly challenging work of developing a coherent racial balancing plan. incredibly challenging work of developing a coherent racial balancing plan in our elementary schools. We look forward to more fully engaging in the process, and will undoubtedly benefit from this board's guidance and support. Thanks. I'll turn it over now to a board chair.
Thank you. I don't have too much to add, but I will say that the Hampton Board of Education is very firm and knowledgeful for racial balancing of our schools because it is the right thing to do. We want to do the important work of making sure that our town provides some type of segregation that is placed and to make sure that the process is community-based. We want to go visit all the different school communities in town to have listening sessions so that we can identify the particular needs of each individual community, but also to make sure that the meetings are accessible and we hire, because we also recognize that many of our families have very different schedules, travel categories are expensive. We also want to make sure and synchronize that any lack of traffic communication around and is also accessible in various languages, also to make sure that everyone in our town is able to access this information and have a voice in it. But also, you know, with board and great plan, one of the things that I feel is a priority is to make sure that the process is handled and not simply redrawing district lines, which might be a more economically feasible process, but it involves a very short term and it is not very realistic for me. It is important that every community member is part of the process, but also every single community member is also part of our institution. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. It was quite a significant change from where we were. It had been at the Legislative and Policy Committee discussion before. So I'll turn first to Board Member CD, Chair of that committee.
Thank you. Thoughts that, the same sorts of thoughts that I was having as I was looking through this and looking to your presentation and, and I think from the community and that I haven't necessarily heard from, from you all, but also from other communities that we unfortunately need to meet with around these issues as well. So I just wanted to thank you for the time that you put into developing this plan. For me, nothing happened fast enough, and it's very disappointing to see sort of the rollback of virtually everything on the initial plan. I think you described the situations that sort of led to that. I think for me, I want to make sure that the work on this plan is a priority and that it's not the last thing that we deal with because there's these other things that come up, right? So for me, that's, that's kind of where I've left with great, like, with what relative assurance, right, that this is a, this is a priority that doesn't sort of get pushed aside as the time moves on and potential leadership changes, you know, all sorts of things that continually make progress on this matter across any other school district that's struggling to sort of push it off to the side.
Okay, I appreciate that. And so that's the board chair knows our why, and I'm DNG, and Hampton, or why. The board chair, I know their information, I'm not quite sure. And this movement, so I know I'll be there. I can, I can assure you that the seriousness of taking this, that's why I wanted to clarify in the MOU, that's why I wanted to make sure we allocated specific resources to this, that's why I wanted to make sure that we deliberate and help you approach this. I mean, it is a sort of, we have a plan, say, here it is, this is what we're going to do, that is within the context of rather coherent and systemic changes of the district. So we're not going to do this in isolation from other significant changes that are taking place and will take place, building part of that whole process of getting about improved outcomes for students and a better sort of sense of community and so I can assure you that this is a central part of where we're going. It's not going to be something that's sort of put to the side.
This agreement with district management appears to be a multi-year agreement. Is the funding that is secured also multi-year funding? How many years of DMG contract will it cover?
We're still working on that. It depends on how we move about these phases. So it may take two years for DNG, it may take three years for DNG, but as we actually make the agreement that I signed and give it to the board chair, it'll move better at that point. So the funding will be part of, for next year, the funding will be part of our budget process, our traditional student-based, district-based budget process, to make sure we have the funding to continue to engage DNG, or also look for grant funding for this one.
I don't have a microphone, but hopefully you can hear me. I often joke that the longer I'm towards, the farther away I get from the guy. And I'm almost with y'all now. Come on, take one first. Thank you, Superintendent. One thing you said was you're going to have community conversations on racial balance. And I think, I think there's one thing that has community conversations on racial balance. It's a whole opposite to have community conversations on racial imbalance. I think they're very distinct. So I just wanted to kind of clarify, are you having conversations on racial balance or imbalance?
Both.
Both. Secondly, I've experienced, just being from Manhattan, living in Manhattan, I've experienced him as being too hammy. And when you talk about in number three, community demographic trend, what exactly does that mean in this context?
Well, the meaning is who is where, because for all, they don't necessarily really have one of these, so if you have a matter of you were there, that's where you're going to go. But for the elementary schools, it's all based on, not based on your choice, right? If something is where people request to go to schools in other districts, for whatever reason they might have chosen another, another school, or it could be any other reason why they would request that, that's on the district basis. So that's what we're going to look at, exactly who's living where. Because the easy way to do it is to say, really, come to more diversity every day, can we just do this, or again, can we just leave it alone because it's balanced at some point? I have been believing it's the opposite, but it is. And I've got some racial imbalance stuff and formulas by which that is determined, but I'm working under the strengths that I'm working under at this point. I would love to see the legislature take that up and have a discussion about it in 2023, because I understand the original intent, but it may be a little different now in 2023, and if you don't sort of take a look at the formula by which you determine whether this is racially balanced or not, I think we might be doing ourselves in justice. And that would lead to a different kind of conversation in 2023.
And I will add, I love the fact that you are authentically including community, right, community voice in your potential plan. I, I think all cities or all districts who are in this particular situation, all the government should do that. So this could be a real model.
I appreciate that. There's, you know, my board chair, my board chair would have no other.
Don't be so happy with that. And just be a ragged lot.
How, how, and there are people who need, if you don't have, no conversations. We, we anticipate that there will be some difficult conversations.
Absolutely. That's why people don't do it.
Right. Well, your name, well, mostly becoming difficult, so I'm probably just difficult, I'm probably made as well, I've been here as well, so. And as to your final point, I think there are more than two handles, I think there are multiple handles of this handle, and trying to get the community to unify over one message and one vision will pass, meaning the greatest challenge that we had with this board chair.
Thank you for being here, for working with this difficult issue. On the second line, it says your plan is to work toward compliance with the guidelines. It would be stronger if you said that your plan is to comply with the guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is it?
Not working.
What is it?
Work, work, towards, or it's definitely your goal is to achieve the goal.
Really, I think that I may, I can assure you that during a plan that we believe will get us to the goal that states that. Because I can't see it to the future, I can't really work towards it, that's why I bring this as it is. So we intend to, to meet and, and comprise regulations, or my, your goal, your function.
I think you get the sentiment of a board who's heard many people come in front of us with plans that have not led to compliance. So that's, that's the urgency with which, with which we bring, that we bring this issue. I would, I think refer this to Legislative, Legislative and Policy Committee to continue working with you around your own compliance, but also I think we share concern that the racial imbalance law is not getting us where we need to be quickly in that. So I think hearing the board concerns, I hope that you, that you hear the urgency with which we take this matter, our concern that the original plan has not moved forward and that we're back to a sort of planning stage is, is not where we want to be at this point. I hope you're hearing that and, and that you'll continue to work with the Legislative and Policy Committee around, around that and have a strength in law going forward. Are there any other questions? Seeing now we're ready for a vote on this, all those in favor of accepting the Hampton Board of Education's addendum to its racial imbalance plan, please do so by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any, I know I'm jumping close, but waiting patiently in the wings has been, somebody said item 11A, items of discussion only, this is a presentation by the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, Safe Route to School. Is Ms. Lavette still with us? Okay, great. So let me know if you can present and get back to the work of the DOT. Our members have been either for discussion only, Safe Route to School. Okay. There isn't any that being passed out right now, but we'll get started. So under Commissioner Garrett's leader's leadership, the DOT has been prioritizing safe and accessible, sustainable transportation for all users. The Safe Route to School program is part of the work being done by the Bureau of Policy and Planning, led by Bureau Chief Kim Lasse, and Kristen Lavette, I think I did, did I do that right? Okay. Is the Safe Route to School Coordinator, and she is here today to talk about the program with the board. And so she has a slides and will do a presentation for a few minutes, and then will be happy to open it up for any questions that folks may have.
Thank you.
Okay, very welcome.
Thank you so much for the introduction. I would like to thank Chair Dr. DuBrow, Paulson, Viles, Vice Chair Benham, and distinguished members of the board for having me here today. My name is Kristen Lavette, I'm a transportation engineer at the Department of Transportation, as well as the Safe Route to School Coordinator in the Bureau of Policy and Planning. I'm grateful to Education Commissioner Russell Tucker and Transportation Commissioner Uso Lito, along with our bureau chief, for having conversations and communicating on this initiative to be able to get possible for me to present to you today. My background is in transportation engineering at the DOT, as well as in Boston, planning in summer role Massachusetts. Both have deep experience in the state of Connecticut, in both math lab and special So you may wonder why I'm here from the DOT and why Safe Route to School is a program relevant to the work being done by the State Board of Education. But when we look closely at the goals of the Safe Route to School program, alongside the board's comprehensive plan and the board's positions, we can see commonalities with regard to the coordinated health and safety programming and strong school, family, and community partnerships that strengthen and support Connecticut's great schools. The board's comprehensive manager, Mr. High expectations, great teachers and leaders in great schools. And as you know, Mr. Great Schools includes that they build strong community partnerships, authentically engage parents, as well as support the academic, social, emotional, and physical health needs of students so that they can thrive. While Safe Route to School at the Connecticut DOT focuses on programming and projects that provide safer, more accessible, and more sustainable routes for students to walk, invite to school, this goal will require those strong partners to reach those student aims. Today's question will talk about the purpose and need of the Safe Route to School program, the relevant legislation, the Safe Route to School framework, benefits for students in schools, and opportunities for the interagency collaboration. Some questions to be thinking about are how can Connecticut for State Board of Education and the Connecticut Department of Transportation work together to do with the best students? And what opportunities are there for agencies to collaborate? The purpose of our comprehensive Safe Route to School aligns with the current Department of Transportation goals for safety, accessibility, and sustainability. By making active transportation safer and more accessible, all children, regardless of socioeconomic status or religion, will be given the opportunity to walk or bicycle or roll to school. Sustainability can be divided both economically and environmentally through increased physical activity and decreased traffic to consumption and air pollution. Support for Safe Route to School is needed to be able to implement programs and projects that increase walking and bicycling in school. By taking a look at data from the Safe Route partnerships, just from 1939 to 2009 alone, you can see the dramatic decline in walking and bicycling in schools as compared with the arrival of missiles with the family vehicle. Although more recent data shows some fluctuations to the numbers themselves, the overall picture shows a continued decline, indicating that the majority of students who are not bus or using public transportation are being driven to school instead of walking or biking. Additional data shows that one mile of walking to and from school is equal to about two-thirds of. So this data aligns with the board's position statement on a coordinated approach to school health and points to the research connecting with health and achievement. Recent federal regulations from the infrastructure investment in Dobzak in 2021 reauthorized Safe Route to School to include the vicinity of schools to be within two miles of the school, and also included high schools and child endangerment. This map shows the areas of the state that are within the vicinity of schools. That two-mile buffer area is shown in blue, and as you can see, it covers a large portion of the state. Safe Route to School is unique in that it provides for both infrastructure projects and non-infrastructural programs as part of the Safe Route to School program. Funding has been provided through a variety of sources and current efforts to fund and deliver the other way at this time. In addition, Michigan state legislation passed this summer in Connecticut, Republic Act 23116, calls for consultation among agencies toward a Vision Zero program leadership based upon a local or regional Board of Education's request when a program offered that includes instruction on pedestrian safety in particular. I'll touch on this a little bit more later in the presentation. Safe Route to School offering center the framework known as the Fixed Ease. Equity and their overarching measure and drive the goals of the programs and the project. In this framework, it is believed that expanded to include the Fixed Ease. We're looking for support to encourage schools to join the Safe Route to School program to allow for equitable distribution of resources, so we'd like to encourage all schools to be able to join Safe Route to School. The program, teaching the Safe Route to School overarching program includes bicycle, pedestrian, and safety education in schools. Our group has been able to do a recent examination of programs across the state that are already implementing school, bicycle, and pedestrian safety education within schools. We've developed a working group to be able to review and recommend bicycle, pedestrian, and safety curriculum to the Vision Zero Council that we would really be happy to share with the board to take a look at as well. Vision Zero program of distinction recently passed by the Connecticut state legislature encourages pedestrians to be a particular in grade six through 12. The working group's recommendation will encompass this, as well as additionally provide bicycle safety education and expand that safety. bicycle safety education and expanded student engagement. The board's support for safety education in schools will be helpful to address this effort on the part of the framework. Encouraging, another E in the framework, are the events. Nationally, there are two events, one is the first Wednesday in October, which is October 4th, and the first Wednesday in May. And they encourage all Connecticut schools to be able to register for these events. Our DOT team will provide support for the events and normally run by the school community themselves. We're asking for support, the board should encourage schools to be able to register and attend to these events to participate. October 4th again is our first Wednesday in school year. Give us the numbers and the details of the events for Safe Route to School. We believe that leads us to evaluations. We provide for walk audit that can lead to recommendations for enforcement and engineering enforcement, including feedback signs, school zones, traffic environment training, and engineering improvements to the built environment, can be sidewalk, passageways, as well as quick build projects like range crosswalks, pedestrian signal enhancement, and bicycle apps. The National Safety Partnership research indicates that increased walking and biking to school results in many benefits for students. Some of these include traffic safety, climate benefits in the area, healthier students, and better academic performance. We always wish best for students. And so to make it to our question from earlier, how can the Connecticut State Board of Education and the Connecticut Department of Transportation work together to do what's best for students? The Department of Transportation works to create states' accessible and sustainable modes of transportation to and from school, including walking and biking. Safe Route to School's equity, education, and encouragement activities in particular are ways that the board and department can work together to do what's best for students. So what opportunities are there for our agencies to collaborate? We'd like to ask for support for all schools to be able to join Safe Route to School programming through registration on the website, support for bicycles and pedestrian safety education in school, and support for registration and participation at events, including promotion of our October 4th Walk Bicycle School Day. And then in addition, I just wanted to show some photos of sharing this from our observations of existing bicycle and pedestrian safety education that's happening in schools. Being from the fourth grade program in South Windsor, this curriculum has been developed by the Bike Walk Connecticut Group and is implemented in a three-day hand-on model. And then some photos of our most recent event, Walk Bicycle School event that was supported in the spring. And as you can see, this is a piece of the object to share about their transportation in school and fill up the bike racks where the food was flowing. While we're excited to see them on event day, we could use your support to be able to see this level of active transportation and other things as well. Thank you again for our opportunity to speak with you today, and I welcome any questions or feedback.
Good to join you.
Yes, sure.
Very surprised by the fall off between 69 and 2009 in walking versus being driven. Do you have an explanation for it?
It's been a funded Safe Route to School partnership, and they have a lot of, they came to a lot of different research articles, which I'd be happy to share with the board. There's no one specific, I think, indicator, but again, it's shocking to see how much that has changed.
My first thought was that it was somehow related to COVID because we can blame everything.
No, this was before COVID. Yes, before COVID.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you again for the opportunity.
And I'm sure the commissioner has lots of ideas about how to get this message out to districts that will.
Thank you, and I also can't help it, it's for me, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner, is something that the department has done before in their literature?
I think we have. I think we've been a part of this Vision Zero team as well, but certainly to augment and share information directly with districts about participating. We've talked about the October event last time, I think I talked about it here, so we can certainly do more. Look forward to that. And I see John, President, that is in the room. We will connect.
All right. Board members, looking at the consent agenda, items nine, A, B, and C, is there any board member wishing to remove an item from consent?
I'd like to remove item B, so that I can ask a question.
Okay, so we will remove item nine B from consent. Anybody have any others? All right, so removing that. The chair wants to be in a motion to accept Consent Agenda, items A and C. It moved improperly seconded. All of the favor of Consent Agenda, items A and C, do so by sign of eye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Like to move item nine B now to an item requiring action, to entertain a motion on nine B, the continued approval of the University of Hartford Educated Prep Program. Is there a motion?
Seconded.
Please get properly seconded. Welcome. Tell us about the recommendation for continued approval at University of Hartford's Education Prep Program.
Good afternoon, chairs, and I welcome Vice Chair Benham and board members. Today we're here to share information on the University of Hartford Educated Preparation Program. University of Hartford hosted their Council for Accreditation for Educated Preparation Visit Fall 2022. Based on that visit, they will grant this full accreditation. In your packet, you will see the board report, as well as a link to the Council for Accreditation of Educated Preparation Report, which outlines five areas for improvement. Members from the University of Hartford are present to share with you their plan for how they will be remediating their areas for improvement. You will now hear from Carol Giada, Paige Gray, and Chess Thompson.
Thank you, Chair DuBrow, and members of the board. I am Dr. Chess Thompson. I am the Dean of the College of Education and Health professions at the University of Hartford. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak on behalf of the University Educated Preparation Program. We will please EPP forward accreditation at the initial licensure and advanced levels through spring 2030. While CAE determines that the EPP has all accreditation standards for both sides were identified. These AIs are consistent with our own assessment as we prepare for the accreditation visit. We have developed an action plan to address these AIs, and in some cases, we have already begun to implement strategies in theory to improve our EPP. At this time, I would like to highlight some of the key actions for each of the AIs. In addition, we have provided the board a written document that includes more detail about our plan to address the AIs and fully meet the standards, beginning with standard RS 3.3, confidence being at completion. CAE noted that the EPP lacks the segregation and analysis of candidate's digital disposition. To address the AFI, our program is adapted to the Watermark Educator Disposition Assessment. This assessment is a valid and reliable measure of teacher candidate disposition that will be used to track and monitor their dispositional behaviors as they progress to our teacher preparation programs. We have identified multiple points in the program to track and monitor candidate's disposition that are associated with positive learning impact of teacher 12 students. The EDA consists of dispositions and related indicators explicitly aligned with CAE standards, intent standards, and professional dispositional elements that are found in prominent teacher evaluation instruments. In addition, we will be developing a remediation process for intervening when candidates are not demonstrating effective dispositional behaviors or making progress toward improving. The EDA will assist us in identifying gaps for the purpose of intervention. Here are four satisfaction with preparation. Three AIs were identified in the standard, all related to the use of more data to demonstrate that program completers effectively contribute to P through 12 student learning, employers are satisfied with program completers, and program completers are satisfied with their preparation. All of these AIs will be addressed by implementing a new and more robust system of collecting, analyzing, and using data to make improvements. We have already begun to address these AIs by strengthening our program assessment and evaluation system, which also relates to the last AFI, R5R1. Recognizing that relying on data from employer and computer surveys is challenging for many, if not most, EPP, we will be implementing additional strategies to collect data from multiple sources and using a number of methods as described in CAE's resource document on program impact. We will supplement the data we collect with that provided by the State Department of Education and district data, if available, to help us better identify and track the student's effectiveness, academic year, and include a number of strategies and best practices recommended by CAE. For example, we will gather data from computer surveys and U.S. data, district and educational support partnerships, interview or focus groups, case studies, and computer induction programs. Standard five, quality assurance system. CAE noted that while we provide parts of the QAS, the system lacks sufficient evidence of its capability and functionality to support program assessment and improvement. To address the AFI, we have redesigned our QAS and put structure, processes, and people in place to promote more effective collection, analysis, and use of assessment data. Notably, we had a new assessment platform at the university that will aid significantly in the collection and analysis of data, and we have put in place a full-time staff manager of assessment and evaluation. Our new system ensures a sustainable process that will allow us to monitor data entry, make decisions based on data, and implement improvements to support the EPP's effectiveness. The written plans that we are providing to the board include a flow chart that illustrates how we have redesigned our quality assurance system, its various components, and how they each will contribute to a clearer and more effective process. Thank you.
Okay. Board member's question?
Yes. I don't have the room to address this question, but the commissioner or my colleague. But in general, when the committee evaluates the educator preparation programs, do they consider the pass rate on the graduates on the access device and shoes?
Lauren?
So standard one of the CAE standards is about content mastery. So when CAE does their full review, that is embedded within that process. So what the review committee does is the review committee reviews the final CAE report, which had that as part of it.
So they do. They do look at the.
They do look at that.
They look at the pass rate.
Right, so that all of that content mastery is part of standard one for CAE.
Because I think the colleges have an obligation to ensure that the graduates have the content knowledge. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the resolution on continuing approval of the University of Hartford Education Prep Program, please do so by the sign of eye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your continued work. Motion carries. Okay. All right, let me do a real easy one. Item seven A. As I mentioned, our board member and colleague, Alilda Riesko, has stepped down from her service on this board for her own personal and family reasons, but certainly has been a contributing force on this board and will miss her voice. And so this item is our Connecticut State Board of Education Certificate of Recognition and Honor of Alilda Riesko, who has served with distinction as a member of the Connecticut State Board of Education, and with appreciation for her significant and lasting contributions to the State Board of Education and selfless dedication to Connecticut's children. Approved, well, I hope to say, you may not say, the sixth day of September 2023. Can I have a motion on this item?
Move it.
Moved improperly seconded. Any discussions? We will miss Alilda's voice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Please be sure that this makes its way to our colleague. Okay, we have an item for action seven C, which is to either issue a report or order a hearing in the matter of CS certification action. Is there a motion? On item seven C. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm here with my colleague, Lou DeVisco. Lou was one of the co-authors of this board report, so I'm going to defer. Thank you. Good afternoon, I know. Good afternoon. Yeah, this is a fairly simple, straightforward matter. A finding probable cause which may indicate an educator, based on certain conduct of that educator, probable cause to believe that action should be taken with respect to the person's certification. When a finding probable cause is made under the regulations, we send an administrative complaint to the educator, explaining the nature of the case and asking the state board to take acting. The communication to the educator also includes notice that the person gets to request a hearing, in which case you will fully indentify for the state board if you want two things. Number one, order a hearing on its own, in which case you would have to present a case at a hearing against the educator. Keep in mind, the educator himself did not request a hearing. The second way of handling these cases is bringing the disposition through a report being written by the legal office and presented by the commissioner and the legal office to the state board, and explaining the nature of the case and the state board that it's separate representation because we're bringing the case to campus to send to the state board. It would be a solicitorial thing to be general hearing required of the board and the test of status. We've done this once or twice in the past over the past two years, and the board has handled these cases by ordering a report and by filing a report. But again, a hearing is an option. The commission is recommending, and we recommend, that if he doesn't file a report in this case.
Thank you for your clarification. Just for the board clear, what's in front of me right now is whether we want to go to direct Mr. DeVisco to, my finger in my right, DeVisco, to proceed with a written report, or do we want to order a hearing? And you've heard the background, and the proper notice has been provided due process for this. Chair is looking for a recommendation from this board in the form of a motion to do one of the two implications that are on the back page. So you may make a motion to order a report or to order a hearing. Is there such a motion? Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move to order a report.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded, that our next step is to order a written report. Any discussion? Any further questions on this? Seeing none. All those in favor of the state board ordering a written report in the matter of CX certification? Please do so by sign of eye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. In a future meeting, you will receive then a written report, and the action we take will be based upon that written report that comes. All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven E is the Joint Position Statement on Equity in Mathematics Education. This is a matter that has come before the Legislative and Policy Committee. Getting my committee confused. That's the one occasion. End of question.
Good afternoon, and thank you. For this item, I am joined by my colleague, Colonel Pramichalak, our math and computer science education specialist for the department. As we stated in our board packet, it is the Joint Position Statement on Equity in Mathematics Education, and this was presented to the Legislative and Policy Development Committee of the State Board on October 12, 22, and then on the full board December 7, 22. And during that meeting, there was a request to gather additional information and answer some important questions presented by board members. As a result, revisions were made based on those great questions. The document now is ready to reflect those results of those recommendations made. As a reminder, the primary authorship of this position statement does include malad and expertise from three organizations listed in the document, Amtech, Atomic, and CCLM. Amtech, Atomic, and CCLM, and each represents teachers, education leaders, and higher education. The thing before you is set three central commitments to transform education policies and practices that have the potential to engage and reengage our banner. And we think that the state board's endorsement on the equity mathematics in Connecticut, a joint position statement, will support the ongoing work of the State Department of Education and the state board to improve mathematics education and student achievement across all Connecticut schools. We are happy to answer any questions you may have.
What members, any questions? No. Thank you all, as well for taking back the recommendations that come before and bringing us to the revised version. We're excited to advance math equity in our state. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven G.
We are indeed a proverbial bad penny.
I should have done anyway order. I'll die for that.
Just a month long to stand up and just sit back. We appreciate that.
All right. So for this, and what our option in front of us is.
Okay. This is, if you recall, back, I think it was in June, we brought to man you to a petition for declaratory ruling, primarily involved in that. And this is kind of the same idea. It's a petition for declaratory ruling. This is a foghorn sensitive issue. It's an extremely important issue. It pertains to the statutory interpretation of section ten dash sixty-six E E of the Connecticut General Statute, specifically subsection D seven. And what that provides is, when we go back, when students are in charter schools, this statute sets forth the means by which the charter schools are to be compensated by the child resident school district for providing special education services. And it's become an area of dispute with respect to Brad City, the dispute between Brad City and Waterville Board of Education. I have a history with this, because I have known representatives of both parties, and we've met. We try to encourage that they work their differences out. Today, they have not. Today, we're going to work the differences out, and there is substantial lack of payment actually as alleged by Brad City. And therefore, the parties having been unable to work it out, they have, Brad City, pursuant to their right in the section four dash one seventy-six of the Connecticut General Statute, the sections ten dash four dash twenty-one and twenty-two of the regulations of Connecticut State Agency have submitted this for a petition for declaratory ruling. They set forth five issues, and again, Lou has done a Herculean job looking into this and formulating what he believes to be an appropriate approach, one which I totally concur. Lou, as usual, is right on the mark. And so I'm going to, because Lou was the primary person with respect to the actual formulation of this board report, I am again going to defer to Lou.
Thank you. Let's set forth the situation fairly clearly completely. Brad City posed five different issues that they've put to the board to rule on in connection with this procedure. We've looked at it fairly carefully and decided that two of them are deserving the board consideration possibly. They're often included, the board, for consideration, which we believe may be, may be sub resolution of the dispute between Brad City and Waterville Board of Education. Set of those issues, one and three, one deals primarily with the issue of whether it's required that a local school district pay the actual costs or some other amount for special education services offered to students. And number three has to do with whether certain planning and other non-instructional aspects of the process are deserving of being paid for under the district obligations. Also, the other three rules themselves were not necessary to, ultimately, still be worked out somewhat. We're talking about that, about the exact process we're providing additional information, both by the parties of this case, the local districts providing some opinion on these issues. They were given that opportunity. Also, as again, we've made a recommendation that suggested...
The party agrees or said, I think somewhere in November. And essentially, what we're proposing is that we will redo that information, we'll do an investigation of our own, and based upon that, we will draft a statement, a recommendation to this board with respect to the declaratory. We have a full-blown hearing on it. We don't believe that that's necessary. We believe that it would perhaps, probably be more economic as far as time and energy goes, but also provide the same specific information that would be necessary for the board to make a decision on declaratory ruling, or the legal office working in conjunction with the commissioner to prepare such a statement.
Yes. Either party present appeal to decision to the court to these junior courts that could happen and may or may not happen, depending on what's ruling.
And that would be regardless of whether we did it by whatever vehicle we used, by way of written statement, in recognition, or by way of a hearing. I would just add, this is an important issue. This really goes right to the education of special education children. It's an issue that's being experienced not just by Brad City. So that is why we are here for the board. And the commissioner has recommended that the board, although again, there are just three of them, but it is our recommendation that they do agree to issue declaratory ruling on, Lou said, the first and third issue set forth in the petition.
Okay. So as I understand it, if we are not issuing a ruling, we are necessarily to state why we're not issuing the ruling. And so for items two, four, and five, the reason we're recommending no declaratory ruling would be that we find that those issues are ancillary to...
Correct. Correct. So those would be essentially, no further force in effect, those request actually, as does the board vote today. The other two, however, the board voted in favor of issuing declaratory rulings on those two issues. That would start the process of us, again, so we'll stick additional information, conducting an investigation, and then preparing something for the board to review.
Okay. So just some more numbers are clear. The recommendation is to grant a declaratory ruling for items one and three, and that items two, four, and five are deemed ancillary, and as a result, we are not recommending a declaratory ruling on that. If we were to take that action, then there is work that would happen out of the legal office on item one and three, and something would come back to us at a future meeting.
Exactly.
Okay. Are there any questions? It's a lot for all of us, too. Not because you need. I've been here a while. I'm still sore in the face. I don't. Any questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Go forward.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
I got... Oh, my goodness. All right.
Madam Chair.
My case in favor, you are.
Okay.
A lot of free favorite lines for this report. And I think it's tough to read this on my computer rather than having it printed out.
Thank you for making it so.
This is for the preparatory ruling that's to come. You can email it to Woody.
Happy to do that.
Okay. I know I've got you all flipping pages back and forth, but while you're there, Mike, we should go to item eleven B, which we certainly want to, this is an item for discussion on the Killingley ten-four B matter. We want to bring the board at the speed on where we are. You certainly saw the minutes from the, that we approved earlier from the two panel prior meetings. There's a meeting this afternoon as well. We want the full board to be educated on this. So I just remind you that Mike is presenting to us as the representative of the State Department of Ed. He is not counsel to the state board.
I'll quick some, I'll quick some this particular issue.
On this issue, all of them. On everything after, yeah.
Okay, good. Let me just give you a quick thumbnail background. The board aware of the ten-four B complaint that was filed against Killingley. They subsequently conducted an investigation, issued a report, and board, as Attorney Feinstein said earlier during public comment, they appointed a partial hearing panel. The original hearing date appeared to be two days ago, set forth in January of this year. Killingley's counsel requested a continuance due to a personal out-of-state family medical issue. Given that, the request for continuance dismissed, challenging subject manager case law, which provides that once subject manager is challenged, no further step can take place in the case until that's been adjudicated. So there has been a flurry of other motions. Attorney Feinstein made reference to a motion to intervene that his files with respect to that in April of two thousand and twenty-three. The C F E filed a response requesting that that motion be granted, the motion to intervene, that however, is still pending, and the motion to dismiss. Back in early, I guess it was, yes, early August, I think it was, Lou Lee was working toward implementing certain initiatives with respect to students' emotional health, behavioral health, mental health, health. And the C F E has been working, members of the C F E, Kim D'Urso, John Cressenelli, have been working with Killingley on the initiatives. We are also requested, as of August thirty-first, to file a joint status report, which we did. Killingley, a partner of Killingley, to reiterate the request that be dismissed. We set forth some of the initiatives that again have been getting worked on, and actually Killingley included a couple as well. Nonetheless, at the August fifth, a partial hearing panel being set down in hearing day for October eleventh. Killingley, of course, wants that to be dismissed, not to be held. The C F E is of a line that should be held for no other reason than to have sworn testimony as to whether in fact these initiatives are being implemented. You know, this is not, I might have seen it with this analogy, it's like there's a lot of pretty packages under the tree. You want to make sure there's something in them. So that is why we think there needs to be a hearing. We believe the motions that are pending need to be adjudicated so that we can move forward with such a hearing. So that's where we are essentially right now.
And meeting this afternoon?
There is a partial hearing panel meeting this afternoon, and adjudicated.
Which is open to all?
Yes.
Public meeting and all four.
Right. Public meeting. And as you said.
With that, are there questions?
I'd love to spell them. I can say.
All right. Thank you, Mike. I believe we are done with calling you to the table today.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right. Back to page one. Commissioner, may I offer you? Very good.
Thank you for reporting, Commissioner, agency update. Thank you very much. In my notes said, good morning. I was saying, I will say good afternoon. Really great to be back together with all of you of September board meeting. Pleased to report that the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is underway. I know some of us, I think the last set of schools are opening this week. Hallways are alive with enthusiasm and optimism for a successful year. And I know you use a little different terminology here, but infinite possibilities or boundless, but infinite possibilities. Boundless? That's it? Boundless? So infinite possibilities, which is our theme for this year. I certainly add my words to welcoming Connor and Yasmin. And for some of you that may not know, you've seen Yasmin here before because she is a member of the Commissioner's Roundtable for Feminine Community Engagement in Education. And so it's great to see you now at this table along with Connor. So it's great, great to go through all of that, but just discuss a few key items. First, pleased to continue to update you on our staffing efforts. My last staffing update to you back at the June meeting, I mentioned that we were waiting about on ten new hires, which was really exciting. But since April, we've added twenty-four, twenty-four new hires and more in the pipeline. So we're really thrilled about moving forward there. I'm also sharing with you two staffing transitions that are also occurring today. And he's sitting at the end of the table looking really relaxed because it's probably his last day. Director who served the department for two years is transitioning to the Department of Transportation. So you can keep his number just in case you have any questions on transportation. But Eric, we certainly wish Eric very well in moving into a new phase of his career at the Department of Transportation. Sitting next to Eric, though, and this is not always the typical way we do things, is that we do have Eric's successor, who's always started this past Friday, our new director of communications, Matt Siron, who is here and is already sitting very closely with Eric, so we can transition the work that he's doing there. Matt, this is also your board to support. So that is indeed occurring as well. School attendance, school safety, school security, and supporting our educators via the new educator evaluation, as well as the new council that our chair mentioned before, are all moving forward, and we will certainly keep the board updated as these emerging and ongoing initiatives occur. You have, I mentioned, there are many activities that have occurred for the past couple of months. We've been engaged with members of the team. You have a bunch of pictures that we will go through, shadows in your, in your slide deck, so you can take a look at those. There are a few things, though, that I will highlight for you. And will really conclude the, my report, is our back-to-school meeting, as our chair mentioned, with our theme of infinite possibilities. And I appreciate where the chair, vice chair, Mr. Exley attended the meeting, and it is on C P N. So in one of those moments, did we have some time? I think we're here the link with you that you can take a look at that that we sent out. It's infinite possibilities and partnerships and collaboration and supporting all our students and educators' families and the entire education community. I challenge, at the meeting, and challenge all of us in the school community and the community at large, be intentional in the mindset of seeing possibilities as we look at our students, our educators, and staff. And at our meeting, I had the big pleasure of introducing Dr. Ingrid Kennedy, who is with us today as well. She's always in the audience at a board meeting, who we all know is the executive director of CLERK, who shared her story at our back-to-school meeting on her journey as an English learner to where she is today, just a few weeks, getting her doctorate degree in education. And I think that is just so awesome. She typified and personified infinite possibilities. And if you don't watch the video for anything else, you can watch it for that, because there are probably not many dry eyes left in the house, including hers, about her journey and what I heard from superintendents afterwards, that it was so great to remember that their work is for all, all of our students, and to make sure that they see the possibilities that they bring. So I really just wanted to share that. Also, at the, I know me and I shared a list of priority areas that we're continuing to work on. Recruiting and retaining a diverse workforce of educators, which is front and center. Supporting a safe and healthy learning environment for students and school staff to ensure that students are present and engaged in learning every day. Elevating, continuing to launch our curriculum frameworks and model curricula. To promote data transparency, which we do here all the time. To extend, to expand the career pathways and workforce development initiatives. To evaluate funding sustained programs that work and to cultivate strategic partnerships that support all our students. And so that is the work that we're continuing to do moving forward. A few updates for you that I will share, and I'll adjust that and move some things into next month, so we don't keep you here long. But Speaker Jee is here and in the process of, is he not here? All right. Before that, though, let's do our, the first thing we'll do, you can go to the next slide, and again, I'll adjust it, so don't worry. You'll get lunch really pretty soon, is to share some highlights from our legislative session that Laura Seffan will just bring you into here. You've probably seen our C letter that we've sent out. It's twenty pages long of the legislative session and all the things that's now on our plate. But Laura has worked tirelessly, as you know. It probably would have been forty pages if she didn't work as hard as she did to get us the twenty pages of legislation. But Laura, you can just provide us a quick update on that, and then we'll have Jee do the vacancy survey, and then we'll end the agency update.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. And so I'm going to do a really high-level overview of the last legislative session. I did want to start by sharing a couple of things from a report that I found that compares the twenty-twenty-three legislative sessions from states across the country. And Connecticut notably ranks eighth in the most legislation introduced in the country with three thousand six hundred and fifteen... So that comes to, over 25% of the bills last year that were introduced in the General Assembly had something to do with legisli, or had something to do with education.
What, Laura, just out of curiosity, do you know where Connecticut stands nationally in terms of the size of its legislative body?
I don't have that information in front of me, no.
Where is that report from?
This report is from a group called Fiscal Note, and they're relatively new. I think they actually formed during the pandemic. At the beginning, they saw a, from what I read in their, their About Us section, they saw a need for more data in this area and to do comparisons across the state. So a couple of friends basically got together and started this project, and now it seems to be moving along. Nicely, they got a couple of awards last year, so it seems like it is a reputable source. So anyway, yeah, 25% of the bills, I'm just going to say it again.
Are we complimenting or are we cheering?
So a strategy that was employed by the legislators this year was, in the final weeks of session, to combine as many bills as possible on the floor of the House and the Senate into omnibus bills. And so the department and the board, everything that we were charged to do, ended up being 14 bills had charges. Out of all of these bills, 14 of them had charges for either the board or the department. But that 14 doesn't sound like a lot, but it equals 32 pages of the implementation chart. And so that's just to sink in. And last year was a short session, there were, the implementation chart was eight pages long. This year it's 32 pages long. And that represents the work of everyone in the agency and the time that it takes to get that stuff done on top of everything else that we have to do as a normal part of our charges here at the department. So that was all kind of just to set the table, and then I will go over, I've given you, like I said, a pretty high level, I just picked out some stuff I thought the board may be interested in, and so we can go to my first slide. There we go. So these are new requirements for the CFE. So we have a total of 15 new reports. Some of these will be one-off reports, some of them will be annual reports. This brings our total of, I believe, annual or just reoccurring reports up to 57 that we have to do either annually, biennially. New tax forces, commissions, working groups, there's seven on which the commissioner serves or has a designated serving in that capacity, bringing us to a total of 59. Commissions, work groups, tax forces, that are all meetings that either the commissioner or another leader in the agency has to attend.
We are having people.
We are, I am having people.
Where are your charges at?
No, this one. So for grants and earmarks, these are pet projects for legislators, some of these Little League in their town, a Boys and Girls Club, we got 47 new of those that we have to load into the EMS system, each and every one of them has to get built out, and then a consultant would be responsible for administering the grant and making sure that it's all running the way that it's supposed to be granted. And then there is a link here to my superintendent's circular letter that's compiled by myself after session with a great deal of help from our legal folks. It's linked to there. There is actually also a larger report, if anyone is interested, that the Office of Legislative Research composes. Theirs was probably triple the size of mine, but it also included all of the early childhood education stuff and all of the higher ed stuff. So I feel like mine was an appropriate length. But I can also send that one to you if you're interested in receiving it. Just let me know. I wanted to highlight that slide please, just our new requirement. These are LEs and local boards, so financial literacy is now a high school graduation requirement. It had been proposed several times for several years, and the department had tried to work against changing the high school graduation requirement that last, I believe, was graduating class of last year. They, was the first one under the new graduation requirement. But they've added another tax credit, and our academic office is already working all hands-on deck to produce guidance. And so I'm sure that's something that the board will see. There is a new Board of Education member required training that, that the law provides that any new member of a board now must, must complete a training. And so our academic office, again, Irene, has already met with Steve. I think Patrice is still here, and they're, they're working out how that's going to look and what the next steps are going to be. So the next one is the age for special education eligibility. This doesn't sound like it did a lot, but it actually did. So the federal law requires that they, the specialist services are provided until the age of 22. What our legislature did was expand that and say that they have to provide services until the end of the school year of the year they turn 22. And so before someone turned 22 in October, the school would be under no obligation to continue those services. Now they're required to continue those services until the end of the year, which could potentially be costly for certain districts. Next is the FAFSA completion requirement. This is another graduation requirement now. A student, a school cannot give a student a diploma if they have not filled out the FAFSA. There is a waiver, though, that students can obtain a waiver, but otherwise they will have to complete the FAFSA in order to graduate. And next slide please. So next is this educator apprenticeship program. This is something that we've actually been working on for a long time. It requires us to establish an apprenticeship initiative to enable students and teacher prep programs to gain paid classroom teaching experience. We already have a couple of programs that we are running with this, we're partnering with the Department of Labor, I believe, and the application, I think, for this is almost done. So it is something that we're already, it's already well in the works. Publishing Alliance District Plans, this is a new law. There is a information, as we try to explain to them, is already available in our GMS system, so I think we need to just try and figure out a way to highlight it more maybe on the academic page of our website, because it's already there. And then publishing school district receipts and expenditures. I think it worked, there was a great deal of interest among high-up leaders and just other legislators to have more accountability when it came to how districts were spending money. And so they've asked us to start reporting out district receipts, expenditures, statistics for the previous fiscal year. I was just talking to TACI before this, and I think the acronym is RAR, is that what it is? There you go. Resource Allocation Review Dashboard, that is currently used for Alliance District. I think the idea is to expand that, and that will serve as, to meet this requirement. And then lastly, on this page, there is a new requirement for LEAs, actually, to do an exit survey for districts that are leaving the profession, and then they have to submit that to us. They didn't tell us to do anything with it, but we have to, they are submitting it to the department. And last slide. So this is just something I wanted you to take a look at, so you can see the task force working group studies. These are all new, they're all things that the department either leading or have to be a member of, and it just ends up, it ends up being a lot. But anyway, that is again, a high-level overview. Send you again, I'll send you the report, that's a comparison state over state, if folks want to take a look at that. I think it's a very interesting report, and then I can send you a couple other things. And I'm happy to answer questions.
I guess one of my questions is, that exit survey that schools are going to be required, districts are going to be required to do with teachers who leave the profession? I understand that there's nothing that needs to happen through, through, you know, the front of the stage, but is there going to be any effort to try to have a consistent survey so that there can be comparable questions and results that we can potentially look at?
Yeah, I don't believe there was any requirement for the department to submit a universal survey. I mean, that certainly is something that we could just talk about.
Yeah, we're thinking, Ajit is back there saying, he's getting some tasks with us.
Right.
To make sure that we have, you know, and even though there is not a task, the important information that we will have is understanding why folks are exiting the profession. Right now, we hear a lot, we will be able to have concrete information that says these are the kinds of things that are occurring, and hopefully, because it's not just about recruiting, it's also about retaining. And that will, I think, inform our actions, and locally as well, around our staffing.
Just a quick question, because it's statement in the comments, exit survey of the teachers leaving the profession as opposed to further down in there, it says leaving employment with the board. So is it leaving the profession or leaving the local board?
It's leaving a local board. Yep.
I want to quickly answer Alan's question about where Connecticut falls on the size of our legislature. We're delighted with our, for just the House. We're 23rd for the Senate. My most common fact is that the largest legislature is New Hampshire, with 400 houses per resident. The next one down is Georgia.
Okay, thank you for that update. A lot of work, seeing all of the, all of the, yeah, something.
Laura, this mandatory completion of FAFSA, which sounds more like awards to parents than kids. So they're going to have to be, all families are going to have to show their family income to the classroom, do you have, what is this?
So Ajit is wearing clothes, and we are next to talk about vacancies, but we have this effort, as you know, reporting to the board, so Ajit, you may want to just share some information here.
Yeah, just that FAFSA is something a parent fills out with the Bureau of Department of Education. We actually have a partnership with Office of Higher Ed, we're in a nightly basis, we actually get data that tells us which student has committed a FAFSA, which certain hazards, we provide that to the school districts. Completing the FAFSA, that is a really good thing because it mandates that completion, but it also gives the school the weight, the ability, a parent the ability to opt out, and then the school the weight that if they have made good faith efforts. Mandate aside, FAFSA completion is a really good thing, and we're going to continue to support our schools and our students and our families through training and support. We run a FAFSA challenge with high schools and next Friday, historically, when you pay attention to this at a school level, it makes a difference, a measurable difference.
Comment too, that in terms of FAFSA, I know it's been years and years and years of complaints about how challenging the completion of FAFSA. I think really good strides at making that a much easier process, being able to download, as long as you file the FAFSA return, you know, it will automatically download that information into the application for you. So.
Significant improvements in our statewide FAFSA history, even though every school doesn't participate in it, we have seen improvements in our relative standing relative to our neighboring peers who may be ahead of us in other ways. Actually, when it comes to FAFSA, we are, we are upping it.
Well, thank you very much, Laura, for that update, and so we will quickly end our report today, our update, with vacancy information survey that was done, so you can have a sense of, we have a sense of where we are and where we need to be going. So Ajit?
So we did a survey last month, and we asked districts to tell us, districts and approved private specialization programs, tell us the number of vacancies they have among different teaching areas, as well as special service areas and para-educator vacancies. We're getting off with the special service vacancies. The special service endorsements are school counselors and social workers and psychologists. These numbers have been invested a lot, through John's areas, several grants going to support mental health workers in this space. And pleased to see that in, in this area, there have been improvements, and those are entries that are on the number of vacancies, March 23 to August 23, and basically in our Alliance District, we've seen the vacancies, so the new position goes from 156 to 102, which represents a nearly a 40% decline in those, in vacancy in those Alliance Districts, for the special service endorsements. And these are positions where one person hushes several of her students in those schools. So this is a good, I mean, still lots of vacancies, but when we look at teacher vacancies, teaching position vacancies, we see also see a reduction this time by about 22% from about nearly 1,300 vacancies to about 1,000 vacancies from March to August. The thing that we do notice is that the proportion of vacancies that are special education, or special education endorsements is now greater. It used to be 26%, now 35%. And in para-educator vacancies, you know all in school districts, right? Para-educator vacancies have remained consistent at around 1,300 vacancies across the state, across the 190 districts. Again, a greater proportion of them in special education. It was already at 74% in March, now 52% of the para-educator vacancies in special education. And when we, and so, you know, we also ask for sort of their own perceptions of, is the situation improving for you? So this is not a, this is just their perception, because it's also, you know, not just vacancies, but all parts apply, and how many candidates are applying for these positions. And generally, we see that, especially in Alliance Districts, they feel like the extent of vacancies and situation has improved compared to, compared to March, compared to last year. Overall, 44% of all districts, or 63% of Alliance Districts indicated that the extent of vacancies in August was better than last year. In about 18% of all districts, 14% of Alliance Districts indicated the situation was worse. So generally, greater percentage of situation was better than, than worse, and remaining also the situation parameters, healthy response rates. Teaching vacancies down to 153 to 142. The special service vacancies decreased slightly, but para-educator vacancies actually increased in the approved private specialization. And in their case, nearly 90%, obviously their special education-focused, and in the case of approved private specialization, greater percentage felt like the situation had gotten worse than better. So 34% of them felt it was worse, 25% felt it was better, and the remaining 42% feeling like this is better than last year. So I think overall, in the political district, I would say the situation a little bit is better. There's still lots of vacancies, which will affect the approved private specialization maybe better in some of the tenets, a couple areas better, but para-educators, which is a lot of the support function, needs to increase, vacancies.
So we have concrete data to share, and we will save the presentation, you know, we released our attendance and assessment data a couple weeks ago now, but that's a lot, let's do a presentation, so we'll hold that for next month to share that with you. So thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to shout out to the Commissioner and the staff about the, I read in the New York Times, they say that Connecticut is among the leaders in the data that's being collected on attendance, and also among the leaders of the law. I think here's the chance.
No, well, thank you very much for that shout-out. We're really pleased. We still have a ways to go, we know that, but ever so often, it's good to say good job. And I'd say that to the staff, and we do get a lot of mention, they, from a press release, press event that we did, New York News, they picked up Connecticut's data, because we're, I believe, Ajit, maybe one of the only states so far that's showing an improvement in attendance when you look at this issue across the state. So the folks here in this room, Kari. So the folks here in this room, Kari Sullivan-Custer, who you made her just dogged in this work, and our districts also have made this all hands on deck, and it is beginning to pay off. So we're really pleased with that, and we're not going to let up. It's so important. But they recognize, which you mentioned, Mr. Exley, the quality of the data, which is something that we've made a priority for over a decade. So we really have a lot of good confidence in the information that we're sharing. So when we see things are trending up, we know that it's truly happening. And when trending down, we equally know that something good is happening in that space as well. So thank you for that recognition, and my shout out to the staff for all the work that they're doing there. Thank you.
Thank you. I know there's a lot of interest in the accountability and academic data, but we will devote significant time to that, sufficient time to that for next month, so. Thank you, thank you for that, covering the report. Item 8A, Financial Matters. This is a fiscal year 2024-25 midterm budget technical amendment. And is there a motion on this item?
The motion is seconded.
Thank you, looking properly seconded. Good stuff.
I can't, I don't say morning. Good afternoon. I will make this quick. I will make this quick, since I know I'm standing between everybody and a little bit of lunch. But before you vote on, we are in the midterm year of the biennial budget. So we received instruction from the Office of Policy and Management about making technical adjustments to our fiscal '25 budget, which has already been appropriated. Those technical adjustments are not allowed to be policy changes. So what you see before here, the one item that we are asking for an adjustment is related to the fact that we already know that in the current fiscal year, in our adult education grant account, we are going to be short by $653,000. That grant was uncapped by the legislature. It's one of our only entitlement grants that is uncapped, meaning that we have to pay out the full amount, whether or not they've appropriated sufficient funds, so that we don't start next year in a deficit position. We are making the request to add the amount that we are going to be short by this year. We will continue to watch that and update it earlier if necessary, as we have more information. But as I said, these, right now, all we are being asked for by the Office of Policy and Management is adjustments to the budget in order for things that are technical in nature, they're not related to a policy change. So that is what's before you, is an adjustment that was at least fully from the adult education account for next year, at the level that we anticipate for this year.
Understood. You heard the description of the item, are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carrying.
Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to item 10, our committee report. And I will turn to each chair of the committee for their report. Academic Standards and Assessment. Mr. President.
Good afternoon. We will be meeting October 17th.
Very good, we look forward to that report. Tell them to leave the court, vice chair.
We have a virtual meeting, instead of our calendar, on September 20th.
Thank you. Finances Audit and Budget, Mr. Herr.
We have been meeting as a committee quite a bit, trying to secure a director, doing interviews for the Office of Director of Internal Audit and Accountability. We have a meeting on August, not August, July, no, August. On August 22nd, where we received bad news that the person we had selected opted not to take the petition. So we are back at the end. We have another set of interviews coming up, probably within the next two weeks. But in the meantime, Nora has finally fully retired. We do have a curational interim director right now, Gloria McCree, who had served in the position years back. And so she is in the position and working full-time, just in the DC staff. We did, at our August 22nd meeting, had a, presented with the internal annual audit plan for fiscal year 7/1/23 to June 30th, 2024. Because of our expansive agenda today, I think that was pretty thoughtful to our board. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Questions, have any?
Hi, so I just wanted to ask what we met this morning. We had two items, the first was Irene briefly presented a draft to parents that will write for English learners, Latin multilingual learners. So we set them off on the rest of their work, and they're going to come back up next month with a plan of how the work will be configured for us. The other item that we discussed was the Department of Firearms Safety Guide. Was passed in 2020, and the collision against gun violence had happened before us. They've also spoken with department members previously to voice concern about the guide itself. Discuss what those issues were at the conference, where we would bring a committee to discuss our thoughts on how balanced that was, was really our next step. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions on that? Seeing none, our CTEC report being brought to us by our vice chair this morning.
We're patching legendary for CTEC. School year is off to a great start, as all 20 locations opened safely successfully last week. The summer, although it went by quickly, was constructed and busy with structural administration, professional development, system-wide, and preparation to receive students. We are excited to have the energy to continue back to the building. CTEC leadership team continues to work across state agencies to explore opportunities in workforce development partnerships. Last week, CTEC and the Department of Labor's American Job Center team meeting at the lottery location to communicate dialogue and planning to ensure CTEC students have access to necessary resources, tools, careers. We are appreciative to Commissioner Dante Marcialamio. Oh, she'll be on paper. Commissioner Dante is my caller, and her team is ten rostered before. CTEC very own chief of staff, Ms. Dolins, would name one of Harper Business Journal's 40 Under 40 recipients. The 40 Under 40 Awards recognize outstanding young professionals that are excellent, are selling community histories. We are so proud of Ms. Dolins' accomplishments, which is a testament to the great leadership system-wide at CTEC. Dr. Justin Lowe, the director's superintendent, and Ms. Dolins, both of her, that is, has to be supported.
Thank you. Is there anyone on your behalf? Director Andy Nasty?
Yes, congratulations to our vice chair, Ellen, for succeeding me as the most senior director of Nasty. And she's running on a vote, but actually, it was another candidate. And she dropped down, and she's probably 20 minutes. I don't know. I know we have our annual meeting coming up in October. I know the hour's late, but I would like to pass along. We had a Nasty session about school buildings' effect on health and learning. And we learned that as the temperature outside goes up, the learning and performance in the classroom goes down as opposed to when there's no air conditioning. And Black and Latino and Portuguese are exposed to higher temperatures in their school. And teachers have the second highest occupational rate of asthma, second only to minors. And problems, the least of that are furniture additives, lighting, art, traffic, related to. We had another session where a Ford member from Hawaii reported on the, on this terrible hurricane. And they had a mountain school destroyed, and three schools were seriously damaged. Three thousand students were affected. And many of them are going to other schools now, who are doing distance learning. But there's, well, 100 students that they can't find. And that doesn't mean they're dead, but they just can't find these students. They're not from the school. Something I thought was interesting, that the board, the state board in Hawaii, doesn't have a policy of what is the board's responsibility and what's the administration's responsibility in the disaster. So I don't know if that applies to us in Connecticut, but I thought that was interesting. So that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Exley, I'd share with me also from his colleague in Hawaii, a link to the Red Cross effort that I will share with the board if folks want to.
Okay, and she gives us another, another link to make a contribution directly to the schools.
Oh, to the schools, all right, yeah.
This is a system from Red Cross. It's PSHF, Public Schools of Hawaii Foundation.org/donations/8. Those donations are the right of choice.
Thank you, thank you for that.
They have in Hawaii, they have one source.
Thank you for that.
Sir, we have the report in front of you, and as always, Sir, continues to do the great work of working with our special ed department here, PD. And in particular, I just want to point out in this particular report, the amount of districts and agencies that Sir has just directly involved in for the 2022 video, which is over 50 across the state. So certainly, they're a very busy group, and a lot of wonderful PD and training for our folks and our districts and agencies. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Even though we jumped around, I had checked by everything. I think we covered everything we intended to. Two quick things, you heard a few mentions of the new council that's looking at my. We too are, you heard thought exchange mentioned a couple times in here. We too are using a thought exchange. So I will be sharing that with the full board, if you want to weigh in on what you hope to accomplish in updating the Connecticut Educator Certification. So look for an email with that. And lastly, I just want to add my words and the board's words to what the Commissioner said in thanking Eric Scollo for his work supporting this board and the department over your time here. I will miss getting emails from you, but I'm sure you will pass along, and we'll start hearing them. Best of luck, DOT. I guess we know safe routes will continue to come to us if you're there. But best of luck there, we'll miss you, and we wish you well. With that, the chair will enter our opinion of motion to adjourn at 1:10. Aye. Is there one?